Thank you for joining us. It's so nice to see you guys. If we could call the meeting to order, please, 6:00 PM. And if we could all rise to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to read our mission statement. Together with staff, families, and the community, we empower all students to thrive within a culture of academic excellence in a creative and innovative environment where everyone is safe, respected, and valued. Our vision statement, did I say that mission statement right? This one's the vision statement. Inspired to learn, empowered to explore, and prepare to act. Reports and presentations, chairperson's correspondence, that's me. So we have the Mass resolutions. We're going to be at the conference next week, and we're going to be voting on some items there. So we'll do that next week. Announcements?
This is your report. Do you have any?
We don't really have any announcements tonight.
We're really excited about the volleyball.
We are so excited about the volleyball, yes.
In the Elite Eight, we're looking forward to football on Friday.
Yes, and football, yes. We are just killing it. This is amazing. Okay, so, student advisory report, Ms. Zoe Noonan. Oh, you can stand if you'd like, or wherever you're most comfortable.
Okay, I'll just sit here.
Sure.
So, October, we're highlighting the HHS. The month of October is really fun for us. We have homecoming, which was at the start of the month, the 6th, the 10th. And student council set some really fun spirit weekdays for that. And then you get to see some pictures of that. Keep going, so we had USA Day was Monday, and then we had meme day, and bikers were servers. And then on Thursday, we got to do pep rally again, which we need to do. We were happy enough to not have school on Friday, and most of us were happy to have a year that day. The pep rally was great. We had the opportunity to decorate our sections of pep rally, which we've never done before. That was really cool and fun. So we came in early Thursday morning, like 7:00 AM, and everybody from all the grades came decorated. And then the pep rally was very fun this year. We had lots of different games. We had some old games and some new games. The teachers got to participate and tug of war with the students. And I'm very happy the seniors did get to meet the teachers at that. And then on Thursday night, we had the homecoming football game. They agreed K-11, so thanks for winning, guys. And we also got to present the floats, which we worked really hard on. So we had floats of superheroes. The superheroes were Batman, Spider-Man, Iron Man, and Captain America. And every grade got to show off their work that they did. So if you keep going, you can see some pictures of each of the floats. They were really cool. So they went through at halftime and did that. And then later on in the month, we hosted Step Up Day. So at the beginning of the day, we had the 6th and 7th graders here for the day. They got to spend a few hours here at the high school. They had student leaders in every room, and they got to walk around and spend half an hour in lots of our highlighted spaces. They got to do lots of really cool things, using the Anatomage Labs, the ambulance simulator, the business suite, have direct activities in theater. So they got presentation of all the clubs and activities here at the high school. So there's some pictures of that. They got to use a cybersecurity lab. That was also really fun. And then in the afternoon, after the 8th graders had gone to UCT, they came here. And they got a tour of the school. It was a little bit shorter than the beginning of the day, but they had student leaders, and they just walked around, and they got to see little snippets of each room. And then they had the same presentation, and then some games afterwards. That was really cool. We were excited to have them here. And that was all that we had for the month of October.
That's awesome. Thank you, Zoe. Okay, and we have a special student recognition portion. Dr. Joe, are you going to?
I'll be happy to go up to the podium. Will you come with me?
Sure, yes.
Great. All right. So in case some of you and our viewers at home don't know what the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship is, I'll just explain it real quick. But it's a really big honor. So here is, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship provides a tuition credit for up to eight semesters of undergrad education at any of the Massachusetts State Colleges or Universities. So it's not just the UMasses, but it's also all the state universities, including Mass Maritime and Mass Art, and there's some really, really fine places to go. This scholarship covers tuition only, but it is for all four of the years. So eligibility to earn this scholarship is based on the student's first-time MCAS scores. So way back in 10th grade, when all of your 10th graders, you scored really well and had some other milestones. So the different things that you all achieved is that you had an advanced level on at least one test, so a minimum ELA score of 501, mathematics a minimum of 504, and science minimum of 522, and a proficient level or equivalent on those remaining tests, and it shows the cutoff scores. You need to be a permanent legal resident of Mass, be a United States citizen or non-citizen authorized to be here, a graduate of a Mass public high school, which you all will be very soon, be accepted into the Mass Public College University, and also complete your FAPSA. You also need to be, maintain a cumulative three-point average of 3.0, more is always fine, and annually complete the FAPSA to continue that. So it is actually a hard milestone to reach, so we're really proud of you. You have your letters from Dr. McGuire. Don't lose them. That's what you submit. But we really wanted to recognize you tonight and call out your names. I know that many of you are here. If you have a sibling that is not here, and you'd like to take theirs as well, because you have a few siblings in the group, so proud mamas and papas out there, then you can do that. Or if you're a caregiver or a parent that's here to accept on behalf of your student, then please also come up. When you get your certificate, please come here for a shake, and then come on up here for a group picture. Is that okay? All right, so we're alphabetized. So our first person is Kaylee Abbott. We'll hand that to Kaylee. Next, we have Thomas Dean. I know this next person's here. Kayden Doherty. Go ahead, you're first one up. Excellent. You'll be joined. Congratulations, Shaun. Congratulations, buddy. Congratulations, Michaela. Michaela Noonan. We'll get that over to Zoe in a minute. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, sweetie. We'll get you Michaela with the envelope. Dionne Patel. Did I say it right or did I mess it up? Dionne, I'm sorry. Dionne Patel. Congratulations. I'll remember next time, I promise. Miranda Rosignol. Two sets of twins tonight, all right. Madeline Rosignol. Congratulations. Congratulations. All right, a few more. This is a big batch.
Yes.
Lots of excellence here. Congratulations, Lily.
Thank you. Congratulations, sweetie.
Skysaf. Nope, you'll tell me later. Safe. Oh, sky safe. I get a do-over at least once. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Ellis Rapkowski. Congratulations, Ella. Did I get the last name right? Close, okay. I know. I had the worst last name, so I feel you, I really do. All right, and Mariah Novich. So if you'd stay put for a second, will you join me?
Oh, sure.
Over here, do a group picture. Can you get everyone?
That was amazing. She wants to have a present.
There we go. Good job. See, they're seniors, they know how to do this.
I have a photograph. Wait, I took it right here. I have so many books in here. Let's see. Madeline. We'll get the rest out. Yeah, I love those. Okay. Everyone that came to participate within the awards are welcome to leave, or you're welcome to stay. We won't help it anymore.
Have a great night.
Thank you so much, everybody. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Okay, on to update strategic plan, strategic facilities planning. All right, here we go.
So we're also going to hear from many of our principals and department heads, and so I'd like to send regrets. Dr. McGuire is very ill at home with the flu, so she would like to be here, but Mrs. Borny will be Dr. McGuire whenever there's a high school piece. And yeah, we'll just, we will try to move through these 33 slides as quickly as possible. My hope is that we will, and that it answers a lot of questions that people keep having. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to pull the plan together. Please know that it's just a preliminary plan, and that we'll be continuing to work on this for many, many more months until we refine all the pieces of it. So as a reminder, we did early planning early on in September 2022, where we had our first district strategy. In January 2024 was the first time we talked about re-leveling. This should be, you know, this isn't news to folks, but this graphic is up on our website for people to see. Then this shows some of the other things that we did, strategic planning, the NESDEC study, approved the strategic plan, and then the NESDEC study presented. And then here's where we are right now. We did community engagement in September. We also had the planning and consensus in October, and here we are at this number nine, this little blue star. We're hoping for a school, a positive school committee vote at the end of the presentation and public input, if there is any, after you see this plan. But then November through May, we will continue to plan with a lot more pieces. I will say, I'll say it a few times tonight, this is just one milestone after this vote, if it's approved, because the budget process will also be extremely comprehensive, and the scheduling process as well. So there's many more pieces that go into this. All right. So just in case there's still folks out there who haven't heard about the planning that we've been doing for years, I just wanted to have one slide that talks about kind of all of our communication around this. So some of that is current communication, which includes our student listening sessions, and we've completed grade 1, 4, 7, 9, and 10. We still have K, 2, 3, 5, 11, and 12 to go. They've been delightful. I have a whole slide for that a little later to talk about it. We also had past listening sessions around facilities planning, which is kind of where we are right now, and strategic planning. So there've been lots and lots of listening. We did many, many surveys in the thousands, and so I did put that there. And we have some future surveys planned. So we do want to survey pre-K age, families of pre-K age students as we're thinking about our pre-K program. And we also want to send out a survey to residents with students who aren't currently enrolled in us, because we want to see if they would like to enroll with us, you know, if this plan would be more interesting for them than where they currently are. So there's still a little more to do. And then the forums, presentations, and assemblies. You can see, future forums, presentation assemblies include grade level assemblies for students, student transition activities, faculty meetings, and of course, every school committee meeting, an update on kind of where we are. All right, so here's our current grade configurations. I believe most people know this. And what we'd be going to, I'm going to try to get that bottom of the screen, there we go, would be the one grade moved up model. This was the model that the school committee asked us to look into. So on all of these slides, you'll see major considerations. We tried to think about the who, what, where, when, why, how. The why is always about students, so you will see student experience on there. Our listening sessions, I think, overall, they ask questions for things that we were anticipating, because we were already thinking about the student experience. So that was very validating. Scheduling, facilities, curriculum instruction. Then you'll see a few slides that are more district-wide, about special ed and student programs, technology, transportation. You'll see two slides about the budgetary impact. Please know that until we do all of the planning, we won't know all of the impact, but these are our kind of best estimates right now. And then you'll see some slides on the pre-K expansion and next steps. So on each slide, you'll see important considerations. These are the things that we're considering or that we're really thinking about when we're designing these things. Of course, the student experience, and then further planning, just so you know, the planning that we started, but that we might not be there yet. Okay, so if our principals could come on up to the podium, turn however you would like it to be. There you go. And you'll hear from them, you'll hear from us, and we'll just keep switching off. So the first section is staffing, and we'll start always with our youngest learners.
Good evening. So for some of our staffing considerations, we are looking at adding one integrated preschool program classroom, so that would give us a total of four integrated classrooms in addition to our full-day intensive learning center. We have a waitlist at the moment, and we have a lot of families reaching out already for next year, so we know that the need is there for that space. Additionally, we'll be adding in one kindergarten classroom and one first-grade classroom to lower the student-teacher ratio in those spaces as well. We also have a lot of families looking to move into the born district, so again, those numbers are there no matter what to accommodate that space. And looking into this, it would be maintaining our co-teaching models in the classroom, making sure that the students are getting those needs in those spaces. For the student experience, it really was to create those class sizes for smaller student ratios, especially with our youngest learners, to maximize that foundational experience and learning for them. And for further planning, we have our staff preference survey. We are reviewing all of our staff licensure to see which buildings they would fit into, and then the review staffing in relation to our master schedule to see how that fits best for student needs.
Thank you.
And then BIS, born intermediate.
So similarly, looking at some important considerations for born intermediate, we are looking to move to a seven-track for both grades, incoming grades 2 and 3, which would be an increase by one class size. As Ms. Kopinev said, we have, she had a great number of parents looking to school choice in our incoming, her con grade 2, which would then increase hopefully for incoming grade 3, and the same with our incoming grade 2. Our grade 2 staff will teach all four subjects, so what we consider as singletons, traditional one-home-room classes. Where our grades 3 and 4 will have the same model that we have now, which will be teams of two. We have an ELA teacher also teaching social studies, and then math and science. We will be maintaining our unified arts opportunities for all students, and we'll be looking to offer band and chorus to grade 4 students. Currently, it's only grade 5 students, so we'll be looking to offer that to our grade 4 students next year, in addition to the general music that they're all getting currently. As far as student experience goes, as Ms. Kopinev said, we're looking to create class sizes to maximize student learning for our kiddos. And some further planning, we have staff preference surveys, reviewing of the staff licensure, which we're currently doing, and then reviewing staffing in relation to the school master schedule that we'll be looking at as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Exciting.
All right. Hi, so I'm up for the middle school. Much like Ms. Colbert said, for grade 5, we are looking to go to a seven-track home room, seven classes to accommodate school choice students and a growing population for the rising 5th grade. Next year, grade 6 will be the smallest grade at the middle school, so we're going to continue with a split 6-17. Right now, grade 7 is the smallest grade. From a student experience point of view, it's important to us that our rising 5th grade have a similar experience to their BIS experience, so we'll work with BIS, whether that's teams of two, three teams of two, or two teams of three, still to be determined. And grade 6 and 7 will have a consistent experience with previous years. Further planning is same as at BES and BIS. We are going to be administering a staff preference survey, reviewing staff licensure, and then looking at our master schedule to see where everybody fits, so consistent with the other schools.
Great, thank you.
And I'll speak to BHS. We've all been working together on this, so I can just share that big piece of the 8th grade at BHS is that teaming component and maintaining the teaming for the 8th grade students, similar to what they might have at the middle school now, in terms of that academic support for them and social-emotional support as well. So we would be looking at moving those 8th grade positions up, maintaining the homerooms and the core academics in a similar style, ensuring access to unified arts for all grades. And then we would be looking at an increase in special education staffing based on, and I know Kristen will speak to this later as well, but based on the age span of the programs. So a sub-separate program would not have 8th through 12th grade. It would be maybe an 8th, 9th program, and then a 10th through 12th program. So our youngest learners are not in with all of those learners. Student experience, again, we're looking at really focusing on classes that are 8th grade or 8th and 9th grade together. Certainly, like our math classes, some of 8th graders that are taking Algebra I, our 8th graders that are taking Spanish, could be opportunities for them to be integrated with 9th graders, but not above that. We would not see 8th grade being integrated with upperclassmen. And again, similar to the other buildings, future considerations would be the staff preference service, survey, again, looking at staff licensure to make sure that everybody is placed appropriately, and reviewing the staffing in relation to the school master schedule.
Thank you.
And before we go to the next section, I will say staffing is usually the biggest driver of budgetary impacts, and I do want to make sure, I make an important clarification, our current enrollment in these grades, when they rise, have us having these extra classrooms. It doesn't have to do with school choice, but we will have more room for school choice should people want to come. So it's not that we're opening up for more school choice, but we'll have more availability. But our current numbers necessitate us having these homerooms as they roll up. So you're not seeing grade 4 or anything above 7, because the numbers are a little smaller in that grade. But we do anticipate we'll see them kind of moving forward. We'll be at a seven-track or more in a few years. All right, so now we're talking about scheduling, and staffing and scheduling go hand in hand.
We're going to present together.
Go for it.
So repeating there, so.
So some important considerations. We've done a lot of work creating that 90-minute literacy block in our schedule, so we will continue that, to have our literacy workshop at all of our grade levels for elementary. Additionally, we'll have our 60-minute math workshop as well. You've heard a lot about our professional development and creating that in our block, so it's really important that we continue that work. And again, as you heard in our previous slides, we will be continuing that co-teaching model for special education students or any students that have a wide range of needs, including EL learners. So that has been something that's been growing in effectiveness, and we're seeing that come through, so we'll be maintaining that as well.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So the 90-minute literacy workshop, do you find that the attention spans are lasting that long for that age group?
So it could look a little different, especially with kindergarten. It isn't necessarily a 90-minute set block across the whole day. Generally, we maintain that, but there's a lot of movement in that, and it's not just sitting and doing literacy for 90 minutes. There's a lot of multifaceted learning. They might be getting up and doing it with different teachers that come into the room. Their centers aren't just rote worksheets or, you know, sitting. They'll be working with one another. Yeah, it's a very active 90 minutes, actually.
Awesome, thank you.
And I would say the same at born intermediate. The most, I would say, sitting is for the direct instruction, which for our ages typically around 20 to 30 minutes, and then the kids are up and moving about for the rest, for the next hour.
Excellent.
And it provides an opportunity for that differentiated instruction with either teachers coming in or the classroom teacher providing tiered supports for the kiddos.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Writing phonics, like literacy is such a big thing.
Yes.
When students get it all kind of within the same time block, it kind of really meshes, and they understand it better.
Yes, yeah, okay, thank you.
And as far as student experience goes, we would be looking at grades pre-K to 2 across BES and BIS remaining in singles and homerooms. Our grade 3 and 4 students at BIS will remain with those teams of two. All of our students will have daily unified arts continued. All students will continue to have 20 minutes of lunch and 20 minutes of recess daily. And then again, the grade 4 students will have an option of band or chorus in addition to their general music class.
I love that, that's awesome. Thank you.
We didn't do the further.
I'm bad at my job.
And the further consideration for our future planning is that we're considering that five-day schedule for all grades. For BIS, looking at whether that will go back to the five days. It will remain a five-day schedule for pre-K through first grade. And then new master schedules will include the addition of our integrated pre-K and the homerooms.
Thank you.
Now I'll be a mess.
So I'm up for grade 5. So we're going to work to make sure that grade 5 has a developmentally appropriate schedule. We're planning to keep the same schedule right now that we have for grade 6 and 7, which is a rotating schedule. Classes are about 52 minutes long, and our co-teaching model will remain the same. So again, grade 6 and 7 will have a consistent experience, and grade 5 will be developmentally appropriate. Recess will be a daily offering. I know we've gotten a lot of questions about recess. And our 6th graders still go outside every day that the weather allows. So they have lunch, and then we take them outside for some fresh air and to get a little movement in their day, so we know that's important.
You do that walking.
Yeah.
I was talking to Mr. Lindell the other day. Yeah, that's great, yeah.
And students have the option, I would say, most students, probably 90% of students go outside.
Okay, nice.
Yeah, they do have the option to stay in, but I think it's kind of important, kind of midday movement break.
That's so great. And you guys looking for volunteers, I guess, too?
Anyone who'd like to come out and walk the track.
There's a lot of students out there for the two of you.
Are welcome to. Well, we fortunately have a lot of support. Our school counselors are out there as well. And the kids have been great, and they really enjoy it.
Yes, that's good. We did it as parents, we loved it, yeah, yeah.
Come by.
You're Cory, you're fine.
We can bring your jogging shoes. Some of the kids like running.
Oh my gosh, it's so fun, yeah, that's so great.
I think one consideration is the literacy long block or literacy lab. Right now, this year, we have implemented a math lab and a literacy lab, so really being thoughtful about grade 5, and do we keep a long literacy block, or do we have our students go into a literacy lab? So that's still something we need to talk about. And just looking at our master schedule and making sure we're meeting the needs of all students, but also we have shared common planning time, and that's important for teachers, so we want to make sure we continue to have the same common planning time and to maximize our UA teachers and what programs and offerings they have for all students.
And scheduling at the high school?
All right, thank you.
So at the high school, I think, again, a lot of this is really focusing on that 8th grade experience. Are welcome to. Well, we fortunately have a lot of support. Our school counselors are out there as well. And the kids have been great.
Yes.
They really enjoy it.
We did it as parents. We loved it. Yeah.
Come by.
You're Cory. You're fine.
Yeah.
You can bring your jogging shoes. Some of the kids like running.
Oh, my gosh. It's so fun. Yeah. That's so great.
I think one consideration is the literacy long block or literacy lab. Right now, this year, we have implemented a math lab and a literacy lab, so really being thoughtful about grade five and do we keep a long literacy block, or do we have our students go into a literacy lab? So that's still something we need to talk about. And just looking at our master schedule and making sure we're meeting the needs of all students, but also we have shared common planning time, and that's important for teachers. So we want to make sure we continue to have the same common planning time and to maximize our UA teachers and what programs and offerings they have for all students.
And scheduling at the high school?
All right. Thank you.
So at the high school, I think, again, a lot of this is really focusing on that eighth grade experience, and so continuing to provide access to an array of electives for all students. Looking at a grade eight, nine lunch that is separate from the 10 to 12 lunch in the schedule. Making sure that that eighth grade team model continues for the core academic classes, and their electives would be in an eighth, nine format, as I discussed earlier. Their student experience, again, very consistent with what they're currently getting at the middle school, so they would be receiving their core academics, ELA, civics, science, and world language opportunity, and then math is already Algebra I or Math VIII, depending on student, you know, teacher recommendation for the students. So that would continue. And then, again, eighth grades having access to electives, art, band, chorus, computer science, theater, physical education and health, and a possible school-to-career seminar that they're looking at building for eighth grade students as part of that MYCAP pathway that they currently have at the high school. So again, I think the future planning, there's a lot of work to be done in the program of studies at the high school around that, and then creating a draft of the master schedule to incorporate that teaming component for eighth and potentially eighth, nine.
Okay. Thank you. May I ask a question on that, too?
Yeah.
Please. So the eighth, ninth lunch, I know we were going to try to keep them separate, but I understand with some classes, you're going to have to mix them together, the eighth and ninth. They'll still have their own wing, the eighth grade.
Yep.
They won't be mixed in with the ninth graders in their wing.
So, yeah, so we can talk about that. There's a facility side as well, I believe. But, yeah, so we did start to identify homerooms that would be grouped together that the eighth graders would utilize, separate, and then even like science rooms that the eighth grade would utilize that are close by.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds good.
All right. So our next section is curriculum instruction. Our two amazing curriculum people in elementary and secondary are at WHOSTEP, which is.
WHOSTEP.
WHOSTEP, which is Woods Hole kind of consortium. It's a special night once a year, so we ask them to attend that instead of this. So Kristi Morning will be Jessie Clements and Lisa Dix.
Yes. Really, a lot of people tonight. But I do really want to just, as Dr. Joe did, just acknowledge the work that Jessie and Lisa have done to this end, certainly for this planning. I think the overall message for both of these slides, elementary and secondary, is we're talking about a lot of adjustment. And so with curriculum and instruction, we have the opportunity to maintain some stability. And so instead of really worrying about, well, at the, you know, at BIS, their program is X, and at BES, their program was Y, that can still continue, that the program will follow the second graders, the program will follow the fifth graders, so that the teachers who may have, you know, a significant change are not also trying to learn a new curriculum. The same teaching practices, of course, that we've been really working on, the co-teaching, the workshop model, all of those things will continue to exist in whatever classroom they're in. So again, that any current grade level curricula and extracurriculum things will follow the students. We will continue to use the same core curriculum at all grade levels. So for instance, for ELA, we have ARC. UFLI, we have Hegarty Writing for K to two. Hegarty will follow those second graders, at least for next year. Empowering Writers is three through eight. Again, Empowering Writers would follow the eighth grade, and we have IXL at those levels as well. And then for math, we've been at the elementary level. We've had Eureka and Happy Numbers. So again, Happy Numbers would follow fifth grade at least for next year. And then science, elementary has been utilizing Mystery Science. They will continue to do that. Continuing math workshop, we've made so much progress with math workshop, of course, that will continue. And the middle school as part of that as well, so fifth grade moving up with that workshop model makes a lot of sense. Continue to support, one of the things that Ellen McLaughlin has been working on over the last two years with the pre-K is really building out that literacy program, so that will continue, of course, and Win will be continuing at all grade levels. So we're looking, again, for that consistent academic experience. And future planning at both levels will be that vertical alignment. I think that's a big component. As we look to our future PD, all of that is providing opportunities for teachers to be working together with their colleagues and making sure that that vertical alignment is there. Again, at the secondary, you know, you can see all of the programs, but the same programs that are currently in place will stay in place. Our science teachers at the middle and high school have been working with a consultant around phenomena-based approach, and they will continue that. And we have talked about scooping grade five into some of that as well. Continuing investigating history and our grade eight civics. Again, continuing math workshop. Really, there should be no changes to the type of curriculum and instruction that students are receiving, regardless of what physical classroom they're in.
And that was kind of some of the questions that came out at certain grades, thinking about the eighth grade field trip to Washington, D.C. And so our answer is, well, civics is in the eighth grade curriculum. You are still eighth graders. It's still the same curriculum. Therefore, yes, that field trip will still be appropriate. So, you know, that's kind of the blanket version for all of this with curricula. It's what students learn in that grade. The students are just physically moving, not what they learn. So we probably could have said that succinctly on the slides, but we wanted to list all the important things. All right. Mrs. Donahue, special ed and student programs.
Sure. So the important considerations, basically, all special ed is geared to provide what students need. So all programs will continue based on the student needs for academics and their social, emotional, so no changes there. Continue to emphasize, as you've heard from all the principals and from Ms. Morning, continued emphasis on inclusion and co-teaching. We know that that is the best model for majority of kids. ILC supports will continue, pre-K through grade 12. We'll continue with our alternative learning program at BMS and BHS. Level Up, which is our 18 to 22 program, which is our community-based program, will remain unchanged, unaffected by the move. The one thing Ms. Morning had mentioned that we just have to be cognizant of, and this is just a continuation of what we already do, is we just have to be careful when we have substantially separate classrooms, such as the ILCs, that the state does put a 48-month age span on the, for students to participate. So we'll just be looking at those cohorts like we do every year and making sure that that remains appropriate. So likely at eight, nine, and then a 10 through 12 at the high school. It's really the only one in our.
Nice. Thank you. Is that Mrs. Carbonino reading?
It is.
That's adorable.
I know. Is it okay?
I love it. That's great.
Everyone, I wanted to make sure. Yeah, we've got some great pictures of students and teachers.
Yes. Zoe was in one.
Yep. Mr. Oliver for technology?
Thank you, Dr. Joe. Good evening, everyone. So because of the standardization that we have across the district for classroom technology, this shouldn't really be a heavy lift for us, but some important considerations just to keep in mind, ensure that appropriate technology is located in classrooms that move up. Review and update Power School, DESI data, other programs. So that's really, it's actually very important to make sure that all of our data is aligned across all the different software platforms that we use. That'll take some time, but overall, certainly doable. Student experiences, we all want our students, as they move up, to have a great similar experience, so similar student technology in all schools. For future plan, for further planning, determine appropriate Chromebook models by grade when replacing. That's just really the lower grades, some of the lower grades have touchscreen models versus the non-touch, so we want to make sure that that stays consistent. And then obviously, ongoing is communicating our plans appropriately to all of the district stakeholders.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gais, transportation?
Thank you. The important considerations when we're looking at transportation are always student safety and the length of runs. As we look at this transition, for Bourne Dale, we're only going to have K and one on those runs. We ran into this when we did our last re-leveling for grade span schools. One of the few things that we missed in our thorough planning there was the impact of taking those older peers off the bus and the important role that they played as models for the younger students' behavior. So that's why this is, made it onto the slide, because it was, that was a gotcha when the older students were removed and there's a bunch of younger students who, you know, a lot of them first time on a bus by themselves. Yeah, no. So we missed it, so that's why it's here. So of course, Liz works her magic, as she always does, and put together bus bags. They still continue to do that as needed, which are just bags the bus driver has of books for the kids to read and more appropriate things for them to do.
No balls or anything, right?
She went through this, this is her speaking earlier today when we talked about all the things that she's done. It's also part now of their B2B expected behaviors on the bus. But the last time we did this, we did have to hire some monitors on some of the runs for a little while to make sure that those, everyone was safe on the bus, and the kids knew how to behave. Obviously, we're going to be adding grade five to the high school and middle school run. We, you know, currently, the high school and the middle school are on the same runs now. We are looking at, of course, at, you know, doing some assigned seating for those younger grades up front on those buses. And as far as further planning, really just getting those routes done, no real difference than any other year.
Nice. Thank you. I love those bus.
The kids do, too.
That's great. Oh, my gosh. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Gais.
So I have these next few slides. So there's two slides about the pre-K expansion. We're thinking about this kind of in two parts, over at least two years, maybe even three. But the first one is a pre-K expansion at Bourne Dale. So we know that we need additional integrated pre-K. We're watching the numbers, but we're, it's a pretty sure bet that we're going to need at least one more classroom of integrated pre-K. And then, as many people know, as part of strategic planning, there were a lot on surveys and in listening sessions who asked for full-day, full-week options. And so we've already met with Champions, which is our after-school provider. They have a partnership. They are part of the same company as Kinder Care, which is a younger people pre-K. And so we're in conversation right now about opening up two classrooms for them to use and staff. They'll be part of our school, but it will be their staff, just like the after-school program. One of those classrooms would be for students who are going to go all day for five days, right? Think of your, like, you know, if you have a child in pre-K right now and they go, because of working parents, they go all week. And the other classroom will be as the opposite of the kiddos who are in our integrated pre-K. So if you're in AM pre-K and you would like to stay the whole day, you would go in that classroom in the afternoon and the PM, and vice versa. So that will be another classroom where they'd eat lunch and either stay, or they would come, you know, come in the morning, eat lunch, and then go to the integrated in the afternoon because that will remain a half-day program. So they have this model in other school districts. We're already in conversation with them. So as that proposal gets together, they were excited, we were excited. So that'd be part of the pre-K expansion for this year, this coming year at Bourne Dale. Looking to this campus over here, the BIS, BMS, BHS campus, it won't be this coming year in the 26, 27, but it might be in the 27, 28, once we get all the planning underway. But we do want to look at between one and three rooms on this, on this side of the bridge that could become, as we talked about, an education pathway for BHS students. So we've already looked into some of the pathway requirements. But that, as we talked about in the past, that's going to be some construction, little people bathrooms, you know, carving out the space. And as of right now, I don't know if it would be here at the high school building or at the middle school building. It's appropriate in both spaces, but it kind of depends what our final planning is around the eighth grade moving here. So more to come. Stay tuned, but it's definitely still in our plans. All right. So the next four slides are specific to facilities, so this will answer your question about the high school, Mrs. Beals, but we're going to keep going with our principals at Bourne Dale.
Yep. So our, we have a lot of considerations, but our first four would mainly be, it would be all pre-K, but then also our kindergarten classrooms, most of them. What's really important for us in any layout is making sure that no one is a silo, right? So if we have a kindergarten classroom moving upstairs, we will have two kindergarten classrooms moving upstairs. That way, they always have a partner. So that's always something that we'll maintain in any layout that we proposed. And upstairs will be all of our first grade students. They think they're very cool going up there, so we're going to let the big kids go up top. One thing that we are significantly feeling is not having any type of a conference room space or a meeting space for the teachers. Everybody is great about having flexible spaces, but this will really allow us to have some designated spaces that are very, very necessary, both for students and staff. And then staff will have individual, again, confidential spaces for offices. Right now, we have two to three people sharing a very small office space, depending on what day they're there. Sometimes they're there at the same time. And it's, it's not the best, but we make it work. But to be able to provide people with those private confidential office spaces would be, would be a key piece. For student experiences, allowing more classroom space for the students. Many of you who've been in our classrooms, there's so much in there, but to be able to have less student bodies in there and to be able to spread out, it really gives them more working space within their own classrooms as well. So that's a really key piece that we're excited to bring to our students. And then also having more appropriate environments for some Unified Arts classrooms, but also our specialists or therapists. Many of them right now work off of a rock wall or a loading dock and move around the room, but to be able to have a separate space would be great for the students in that respect as well. And for further planning, really looking at the appropriate recess and playground equipment for the youngest kiddos. And then furniture for classrooms. We have a lot of little guys now, so making sure that the desks are down low enough, or in our kindergarten classrooms, we use tables as opposed to the desks, so just making sure that we have the appropriate furniture for them as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
And at BIS, we have slightly less considerations than the little kids. However, with incoming grade two, we had to think of the best place for our little students to be going and what moves that would then make. So we would be looking at incoming grade two to be moving to the first floor where our current grade three is. And then grade three will be moving up to the second floor where our current grade five wing is. For all of you that know, we have three individual, separate wings for each of the grade levels. We will have to look at additional homeroom classes where needed for grades two and three. As far as student experience goes, as I just mentioned, the grade levels will continue to have their own wings, as well as their own color-coded, all furniture, all walls, all artwork, so that will continue with them. And grade two classes will be the closest to all of the school settings. So when we looked at moving grade three upstairs and grade two downstairs, the downstairs is more centrally located for them to get to PE, to the cafeteria, to recess, to the nurse, and things of that nature. And then looking at future planning, we'll be looking at, again, those additional classroom spaces to maintain grade level teams all together. So thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Jessie Clements?
So at the middle school, we have had conversation about grade six moving to the grade eight hallway so that they would have equitable access to science labs, similar to what's in the seventh grade hallway. So that would mean grade five would move to the grade six hallway. So we, much like BIS, have three separate hallways. Grade seven teachers would remain in their current space. So from a student experience point of view, students will continue to be in their designated hallway by grade. And then for us, for the further planning, it's really the classroom moves, having an entire grade, grade six moving over to grade eight. That's really the biggest impact.
And to clarify on that, the, there's two wings that have kind of more robust science classroom lab space, and so that's why the two older ones would be in those.
Gotcha.
Yeah. You're welcome.
All right. Thanks.
All right. And last but not least, Bourne High School, Mrs. Morning?
So again, I think, Donna, back to your point, a lot of the considerations are around making sure that the eighth grade feels both included in the high school, but also really secure in their, you know, their space, and that they have a space that feels like it's for them. So, and then also maintaining the specialized spaces for both the electives and the pathways, and many of the specialized spaces that have been built up over the last few years, making And many of the specialized spaces that have been built up over the last few years, making sure that those spaces are not impacted. So for student experience, it is looking at a dedicated eighth-grade wing and then centralized eighth-grade restrooms that would be just for eighth-grade students. And then, again, continuing to build out those spaces for creativity and innovation. And the further planning really is just finalizing those classroom assignments and planning the classroom moves.
Nice. Yeah, but we did a tour last week, and we mapped everything out and looked at ease of access. And we even looked at kind of easiest route to get to the other parts of the building. So we do think that if you're an eighth grader who really wants to avoid some of the fray, they're going to be, you know, in a wing that's mostly on the second floor and an easy access coming down to the art room, the band room, to here. They could really take a straight shot and kind of feel a little more secure.
Nice.
Yeah, I think it'll be, I think it'll work pretty well. We also needed to look at classrooms that would be for the additional special ed spaces, because substantially separate spaces, we have ILC and we have ALPS. They need to be kind of in proximity of each other and large enough to have those programs. And so we looked at those as well. So we're finalizing those mapping, but we feel pretty good about, it's all going to work out pretty well.
Nice. And may I just add something, please? So we have hall monitors. Teachers going around the high school, they'll still go down the eighth-grade wing and...
Oh, yes. We have teachers on duty every period.
Yes.
Sometimes two. And so they're monitoring bathroom usage to make sure there's not a lot of folks in the bathroom. They're walking through the halls to make sure no one's going for a walk. Everyone has a place to be, you know. These, as you know, you've been in these halls. They're quiet halls. And people are either in their class or they're doing what they're supposed to do. We have this thing called E-Hall Pass, which they're signing out, so we know where students are at all times. You might not know that, but when they leave their classroom...
I didn't know that. That's awesome.
Yeah, it's an electronic hall pass.
Oh.
So the system, you know, the monitors know who should be out in the halls. So it's all pretty organized and it kind of flows pretty well.
It's advanced. Is it like a key fob or something?
No. It's just logging it in. But you're able to see it on multiple screens, and teachers only allow kind of one student at a time from each class.
Oh, I like that. I didn't know that.
We know if they're signed out.
Yeah. Oh, that's great.
And then they come back and sign back in.
Nice. That's awesome.
All right. So I'll take these next few slides with the budgetary impacts. Again, there's still a lot to work out, but these were our best estimates right now and kind of where we are. So just like we spoke about previously, this plan was put together with fiscal responsibility and student experience in mind. We're looking for the least impact to students while still getting, you know, the most impact for student experience. We need to create staffing that's appropriate for enrollment and special ed regulations. We talked about that already. And I think it's really important, when you start to look at our budgetary presentations later on, we have a collection of classrooms that, as we predicted, we need to add because of enrollment. We would need to add that whether we were making this move or not. It's just that we would be kind of filling up spaces in Bourndale that are not appropriate for homerooms. So we are adding, if you look at the scheduling and staffing, K, one, two, three, definitely, those four classrooms. And that's just due to enrollment. And we're watching integrated pre-K and five. We think both of them will need to be added as well. So that's a net increase of six classrooms, to make sure my math's okay. We believe that that would be there with our current enrollment, whether we were making this move or not. We would just be overcapacity and crowded in certain buildings. So our budget will need to reflect that, but it's not because of the moves. Just want to be clear about that. And then we're planning for all the costs involved to move classrooms, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. So again, we're staffing for special education, and so with special education, there are very strict regulations. So we'll be looking at that. And then we're scheduling and staffing for all current unified arts programming. If you're not used to that term, it just means kind of all of the creative arts and health and PE and kind of everything that's kind of, think of it more like an elective. So we want all of those experiences to continue for our students. With facilities, we'll be looking at the possible addition of smaller playground equipment at BES, because there'll be a lot more smaller learners. They were built for a pre-K through four building, when it was, when Bourndale was originally opened. We're not recommending taking down the current equipment, even though some of it is very tall and we can't allow younger kids to go on it. Because again, we don't know down the road in a few years if we need to go back to a pre-K to four neighborhood schools model. So it wouldn't be wise to remove it now. But we do need to think about additional playground equipment that might go in there. At BES, as Liz was talking about, you know, bathrooms being adjacent. I know, little people bathrooms are always a big part of this. We might be looking at possibly converting maybe one closet to make one more bathroom space. It's really important for little people to have bathrooms close by, for obvious reasons. So they all won't be en suite bathrooms, but they definitely will be like in really close proximity. And BHS will have some short-term fixes and then some long-term ones. So the short term will be interior improvements, like paint and furniture. And Mr. Geis will talk about that in our capital improvements plan that you hear later. But we're basically looking for a facelift. We've been talking about a facelift for a little while. We've been doing little things along the way. But we kind of want to, with a big move, you know, when you move, when you move houses, you repaint and you do things. So we'll be looking for that, to give this interior a facelift. Later on down the road, in three to five years, we'll be looking at MSBA renovation that will be a little more large-scale, that will hopefully continue to keep this building, you know. We always say it's got really great bones. It's a great size building. We've done an awful lot to the building envelope, but it needs to be modernized. So that would be, we'll prepare for that in three to five years. For technology, we need to review all our software licenses. There might be a small budgetary impact, but most licenses go by grade. Some go by school. And so as we said, if we're keeping the same curriculum and now happy numbers is at grade five, we might need to pay a little extra money to activate another school. They're minimal, but we put them here just as a possibility. Transportation, there could be some possible costs for bus monitors at the beginning of the year. It wouldn't be something we'd carry throughout the year. It would just kind of get some extra hands-on deck to help those really little ones kind of understand how their B2B values are on the bus. And then further planning, I can't say it enough, we need a lot more refinement of our schedules. A scheduling committee usually takes a whole year, and we involve a lot of voices, and we meet with staff. And it's a process. It's not something that we magically want to, you know, say we know best. We want to take the voices of our staff into consideration. But we're trying to, you know, truncate that timeline and kind of fast-track it. So we refine our schedules and we refine our staffing assumptions to understand the budgetary impact. There'll be some more renovation and modernization. And then, like I said, two to three years from now, also the pre-K program on this campus. So those are the budgetary impacts that we can see currently. I mentioned it briefly, but we have a moving clause in our collective bargaining agreement that a teacher, when they're asked to move their classroom, gets two days' pay. One day to move in and one day to move out, unless we can provide substitutes or find another time for them to do that. So we can't calculate that cost right now, but we do anticipate that it'll be lots of classrooms moving. So there will be a cost involved in that, that we should be able to absorb on this year's budget. But we'll also put a little contingency in next year in case there's some moves in the summer. Okay?
That is a good question.
Yeah, go for it.
About the recess. So will the smaller students be able to use half of one playground and not the other half? Is that what you were saying?
I'm going to ask Mrs. Carpanito to explain what we do now, because we do have a pre-K playground, but we'd be looking to get some more.
Yeah. Our preschool students have their own designated playground. Our larger playground is not actually conducive to their size at all. But currently, we do have our kindergarten first graders using the larger playground. So it would just be watching that, maintaining that equipment, and making sure that it's always safe for them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
In regards to transportation, do we know what other districts that may be in a similar situation? I'm just thinking fifth graders with ninth and 10th graders on the bus. I mean, I know we talked about the eighth graders when we had sixth, seventh, and eighth all on the same bus with the high schoolers. But now we're talking about one grade younger. These are like 10-year-olds with 15- and 16-year-olds. I get if we do assigned seating, but I mean, it's still a very small area. Very different developmentally. I don't know. It's just, do we know what other districts do? That's just, I think, one of my biggest concerns, is you've got 10-year-olds with 15- and 16-year-olds that take the bus because they don't have license.
Right. Right.
That just seems like a big jump.
Our school in New Hampshire had that. It was the elementary school, which was K through four, had their own bus. And fifth through 12 were all together in one bus. And other than my kids saying they learned curse words a little earlier than they should have. But when my son was a ball boy in the basketball thing, I thought on the basketball team, he learned far more words there.
Oh, sure.
You know, not that there weren't incidents, so again, hearing that there's some incidents, you know, on our buses happens. And we had video cameras and dealt with it as it came. But overall, it's change. It's change. You know, but when I'm listening and I'm like, wait a second, we had that. I had to like think about it with the schools. But 100% our middle school through high school, all the same hours, all the same bus. They dropped off at the middle school and, kind of like ours, right next to each other. And then dropped off at the other, you know. And a lot of those schools, you have siblings, you know what I mean? And it's just, it's change. But it's, when you're asking, what do other schools do? My school did it.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a lot of configurations with other school districts. So I'd have to look specifically at ones that have, you know, the five-through-eight model. But I would say the ones I've heard, these are some of the best practices. You have assigned seating.
Yes.
And I think what's changed since when I was a kid, definitely, and I've seen it change just with my own kiddos at home going on the bus, the older kids just plug in, for the most part. And they really don't talk much anymore. Before, there was a lot of chatter.
Yeah, it's really not cool.
It's the younger ones that are going to need the bus bags, because they're not kind of plugged into their music and such. So, yeah. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Jordan, but...
Well, I would just say, yes, it's a change. Thank you. Yep. And yes, we have, we actually have two cameras, audio and video, on all of our buses as well. So.
That handles it.
Sounds great.
And the kids know that. So I think it really, you know, back in the day, you'd get away with anything you wanted on the bus. And that's not true anymore.
And we know they're working, because in our schools, when we had incidents, and then we went to the school superintendent, we found without bus company.
We know that they were.
Good, because we paid for them and they were.
Yeah, ours worked really well.
Yeah.
Really well. Well, I think, Mrs. Bourne, were you there when we had that? I think when my son was going to school, oh, and fifth graders going on the bus with high schoolers and juniors. Did we have that?
I don't think we did.
Was it sixth grade?
It was sixth. It started when we opened, BIS was when we added middle and high school to the same run.
Okay.
So that also would have been when fifth grade moved out.
So it was sixth grade?
It was sixth. Yeah. I mean, I think I would just say, I would echo what Mr. Geis is saying in terms of, yes, I mean, buses are, you know, they're trying to get away with stuff sometimes on the bus. But they are some of the easiest discipline issues to manage, because we do have audio and video. So I think that does, and the kids know that, and we can kind of stay on top of it.
Yeah. And they are so separate. They really are. I mean, the older ones don't even look at the younger ones, really.
Definitely true.
You know?
I was on the bus when we did, when the New Me School opened, I was on the bus from seventh to 10th grade. I was just sitting in the back of the airplane. And the most noise and talking comes from the front.
The littler ones.
Have something to do.
Yeah. There's a lot of us kids in upper grades who are on the bus. Even if you look at who's registered, most of them are taking the bus, because they're involved in activities or sports. So there's so few kids on the bus.
If they're in high school, they are probably only taking the bus to school.
Yep.
Most likely not home.
Yep. But I do, I mean, I had that concern even with my sixth grader, with the older. Because my, they don't even swear today, so.
Yeah, just kidding. They're valid concerns as a mother.
Absolutely.
But we'll do everything in our power to set the rules. And again, our B2B values are actually really strong. So we have, what you may or may not know, is that we have expectations for every area. So the expectation for the cafeteria, for the bus, for what classrooms. And, you know, as Mrs. Carpanito was saying, we teach the kiddos pretty early. These are the expectations. So, you know, it's not always a perfect world. Yes, things happen. We address them. But we hope that with some of these mitigating factors, we'll be able to really reduce any problems that might arise.
Right. Yeah, I love that you guys talk about the bus. I wouldn't have thought of that, for the, you know, expectations. That's really good.
I have a quick question on that one. So will the policies be consistent for all of the buses? I know, you know, a lot of bus drivers run their bus their way, right? They do their own thing. But where this is such a concern and it seems to come up a lot, would we be sure that there is a policy that runs through? You know, that everybody's consistent in what they're doing?
I always like to think that it is, but I can't guarantee that. But, Mr. Geis, you know, you work with Mrs. Downing, so we have consistent things. And then it's a matter of getting in touch with each driver.
Are you, sorry, are you asking, like, when you say policy?
As far as where the kids are sitting, you know, having the younger kids in the front, are all of the buses going to do that consistently, you know, so that we, you know, can reassure people that, yes, this is absolutely going to be...
Yes. No, absolutely. 100%.
Yes.
Okay.
Nice. All right. So we've got a couple more slides, and then as many more questions as you like, we'll do our best. So as I said, we've met with several grades for student listening sessions, one, four, seven, nine, and 10. We prioritized these grades before this meeting, because these were the students who would be kind of having the most impact with the moves. And actually, our student advisory recommended that, so thank you to your team. It was a great idea. And then also, they said, and please don't ask our, please don't ask the seniors right now to talk about anything, because we're just so busy.
They are too busy for us.
But we are going to come back and make sure, Ariana, that was a good one. We're going to make sure that we talk to you guys later. But, so basically, the general observations, where students expressed a whole mix of excitement, anxiety, and wonderings at all grades. Certain grades had a little different flavor, depending on, you know, who was in the mix. I was most impressed with especially our older kiddos, grade four and above. They really were looking out for the younger ones. And they were telling us things that they thought would make it better or kind of help their peers, especially the older that you got. And we had a lot more questions than input. The questions, the input went like, well, what about this? And what about that? And like, you know, you could see they were hoping for an answer, and we were able to give answers that we knew. And then we honestly said, if I don't know that yet, we'll get back to you. So we are doing a student-friendly and a parent FAQ. We took all their questions and put them together. And I did bring some of them, and I don't know if any of the school committee wanted to comment, because school committee were at all of these as well. But we had everything from, I think the cutest one had to be in first grade, when we told them what was, you know, possibly going to happen, and this little one just went, who's going to tell our parents? It was the cutest thing. Like, don't worry, we got you. We're going to tell you. It's not going to happen tomorrow. A lot of concern about, you know, if, you know, are the eighth graders going to be allowed to go to homecoming? You know, will they have their own dance? And these are still things we want to work through, about the field trips.
Floats and all that stuff.
The grade four wanted to know if they still have their own color. So that was something that was asked. I said, I believe all the hallways are painted the same color at the middle school, but you can, you can take it on and make it your own. What size are the lockers? Will they have locks? I mean, there was just really great questions, and so we're going to try to take all these together. But it was, it was a mix of excitement, some anxiety. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. You know, one of the first questions out of the seventh grade was, will I be stuffed in a locker? And we said, no, we hope not. We don't think so. And we told them about the plan for where they would be.
Nobody knows how to open a locker.
I swear, I don't think anyone uses the lockers.
No, I don't think they do.
No, they use their bag nets.
So, yeah, I mean, it was great to hear from them. I think for me personally, and then I'll bounce it to the rest of the committee, I felt that we were on point with our planning, because they were asking the questions we were thinking of. And then anything else that came out was really like helpful to us, to kind of, to kind of hear from them specifically. There was a lot of excitement in first grade, a lot of excitement in fourth. Like, they were rapid-fire in fourth. They must have spit out 100 different questions. We had about 25 of them. So it was, it was really great. But we will do every single grade, and we'll also do grade-level assemblies, so that we can hear from all of them. But I don't know if anyone else wanted to add about the listening.
I think for the seventh grade, like you said, Dr. Joe, they were just so concerned about the emotional well-being of the younger students. It was really, it was really sweet to see that, just they were really protective, you know? And of course, you know, are they going to have the, you know, for the eighth graders moving up? If we decide that, will they be able to have a float and, like you said, homecoming?
To be included.
But a lot of people, a lot of the students were so excited about the pathways and, you know, having that opportunity with all of the AP classes. So a lot of these younger kids have it together, really. I was just, it was, it was awesome to see, so.
I felt the same way with the fourth graders. They had so many questions.
It was so good, yeah.
And they were so cute. Oh, my goodness. But they really did. They had so many really neat questions, that they're really thinking, you know? But yes, definitely wanted to know when things were happening, which I thought was cute as well, because they, you know, you could clearly see them planning in their heads.
Yes.
Right. Right.
They wanted to know about start times. If they were an official middle schooler, would they be starting at the BIS time or the middle school? These are important questions. So basically, if you're at that school, those are the times, those are the clubs you can be involved in.
That alarm.
We had a question, again, from the fourth grade. Can we still, you know, would we be doing All-Star Review? Or would we be doing the middle school musicals? And so in years past, it would be that they'd be doing the middle school musicals. So these are ones that we're like 90% sure that's what it will be, but we'll see how it goes. So essentially, if you're in that school, you're following kind of all those rules that you would, that you would be there.
I would just say, the one exception, I think there are huge opportunities to include eighth grade in, you know, floats, things like that. And we already have done quite a bit of including eighth grade with athletics. But we did talk about, for instance, a separate eighth-grade dance, that they may not be invited to homecoming. I think just really being mindful of what a 12th grader might be doing at homecoming versus what an eighth grader might be doing at an eighth grade. And also, I think, being protective of that 12th grade experience, to some extent. I don't know that you want a 13-year-old at your homecoming dance if you're in the 12th grade. So I think that would be the one place where, again, yes, everything at this building is open to you. Here's some things that are really specific to you.
Because there are grade-level opportunities, right? And I see homecoming kind of as an upperclassman opportunity. You're right.
And the eighth-grade dance, historically, has been kind of a special time for them, so to be able to continue that as well.
Yes, definitely.
And that leads to one other important one that came from the seventh graders. If they're coming here to the high school for eighth... If they're coming here to the high school for eighth grade, the question was, do I have to stay here at the high school for ninth grade? And the answer is, no, you still have all of those choices that you can make, if you want to go to a different school for ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th. I would implore them to make sure they're making the choice, you know, with a lot of, you know, a lot of understanding of what we have to offer, that's still absolutely their choice. I do have to say, the ninth and 10th graders were pretty excited about showing underclassmen the opportunities here, because they do feel that once they kind of see how great it is, that they might make the choice in bigger numbers, so.
I have a question, just occurred to me, eighth grade, usually you graduate, right? You graduate eighth grade and go to high school, what are you doing? Do you graduate in seventh grade?
They don't.
So, yeah, we don't.
Promotion ceremony.
We have like a ceremony, yes.
They have an eighth grade celebration?
Yeah.
But we did kind of, I mean.
Okay.
We moved to more of a celebration than a graduation.
Okay, no, that's, that's good to know, because I was just thinking, oh, you know?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, and maybe we could move it to the seventh graders moving up that celebration, you know? It's definitely going to be a work in progress, right?
We've got some work to do.
And then to do something special for that transition year this year.
Yes.
You're not losing out, we're going to do more special things.
Right.
Because you're the first grade to come in here.
So that was the other kind of bucket of questions, you know, they asked about step-up days and transition events and all this, so we basically, we essentially transitioning two grades up, and, you know, they would get their own special event with their grade level. So, yeah, we have a lot of planning to do. Also, the opportunity to invite them up earlier for events maybe taking place at the middle school, or at the Bourne Intermediate, or here, just so they can poke around and kind of see things, but then very specific ones for families and for kids.
Yeah, because fourth grade was, a couple of them were concerned that they were never going to be the oldest in that school.
Yes.
Oh, goodness.
Said, but you will be student. I know, it's hard. There's a lot of, you know, validate their feelings, but also, there, there were probably as many butterflies as there was excitement.
Yes, definitely, no, absolutely.
They just want answers.
Yes, yeah, and I love that you said that, I want to call you Dr. Boring, just because, yeah.
You want to?
Mrs. Boring, that, you know, whatever the decisions are around the eighth grade, we're going to make sure it's appropriate for their age group, so, yeah, I love, that's key.
And we do have a lot of models in our area and throughout that have eighth grade at the high school, so we will continue to be talking to them.
Nice.
All right, so the last few slides are around next steps, just to kind of put it all in one place. So obviously, tonight, we hope to have a vote of the school committee on this facility's plan, and then we'll get to work with the rest of our planning. We'll be giving a staff preference survey, and so we'll be asking all of the teachers or teachers' unit, kind of their preference of which building they'd like to be in, you know, the subjects they'd like to teach, and we ask for either three or four, like, in rank order of their choices, because it might matter to them, you know, which side of the bridge they're on, what, what start times they have for their family and their life, or maybe they've been working on their reading specialist license and they're just really excited to make that opportunity, because we do think there will be opportunities for movement, because we're opening up more classrooms in K one, two, and what have you. So, we, we always do an ESP survey, where we ask our ESP professionals where they'd like to be in that, but that's going to be a little later on in the year, kind of when we usually do it, because that's always based on student needs and IUP, so we need a little more time on that. We're going to continue our student listening sessions, continue all of our communications, I'll launch a district-wide communication to families by the end of this week, kind of with the outcome of this vote, just to kind of lay it out there, and then from each of the schools, from each of the principals, they'll also put out a communication that's kind of more school-specific by, by next week. We'll have our FAQs and update our website, draft full master schedules, I know it's one bullet point, but that is going to take months to get those master schedules all together. And then, like I said, refine our budget planning, so that's all in the next two months, it's a whirlwind. Then, fast forward in January through March, that's when you vote on your budget. I'd like to see if, if we're ready and you're open to it, if we can do the budget hearing in February, so do it a little early instead of March, because I think we'll be queued up and ready to do that, because that will allow us to move forward with a lot of the staffing decisions faster, once we know we kind of have a positive vote here. We present to lots of town boards, FinCom Select, Capital Outlay, so we'll be telling them all about the capital plans. We've also been invited to speak at the Board of Select about our facilities plan, just so that, a lot of people tune into that one, not that people aren't watching tonight, but I do think that a lot of people really watch the Board of Select, and it'll help to kind of let them know our plans and where we're going. And then, grade level assemblies and lots of continued communication. Then, let's say, spring, so April through, through June, we hope to get a positive vote for our budget and town meeting, and again, that's for our general budget and also for all of our capital as well. We'll be having a student transition event, step-up days, and we'll be doing staff moves. If all goes well, our staff will know their placements well in advance, I'm hoping it's going to be in that February timeline, kind of once we know about our budget, but then the actual moves will obviously take place at the end of the year, right? So people will know in advance, but moves will happen later. And then we'll have some facilities improvements, if all goes well, over the summer, that will hopefully give at least this building a really great facelift, and as you hear from Mr. Geis, we're also looking at some security blinds and other things, you know, that will, that will help with the security of the buildings.
May I ask a question of the staff?
Oh, you can ask all questions, I'm done.
Oh, oh, yay, okay, not yay that you're done. So the staff, would they go by seniority, as far as who you ask first, or how are we going to?
Good question, but, but no, so, so we'll do a preference survey for everybody.
Okay.
Even if we know that there's only one type of that particular teacher, and they, and they're going to do that job again, just, just in case they picked up another certification, they want to do something, we're, we're going to ask everybody. And then, in our collective bargaining agreement, it doesn't go by seniority, it goes by licensure and assignment. So if there's a question of, you know, we're asking someone to maybe do something really different than they've done in the past, and they have the license, we're going to have a conversation with them, and hopefully it will be within their preferences and their choices.
Okay.
So we've done this really successfully at the middle school last year, multiple years ago with the big Bourne 2020 change, and this process seems to work really well. It's very human, we think, we won't put it up like a cast list of this is where you're going to be, but there's some conversation that happens. And then, if people either move or change, we'll take that preference list and use it as what we call a transfer list, and then we'll ask people, oh, you really wanted to be in this, and now that's open, would you like to do that? So we feel like it's going to be some moving parts for a little while, but we're, we're humbly confident that we'll be able to get everybody into a spot, based first on their licensure. Again, they'll have the opportunity in the survey to tell us if they're either working on a licensure or interested in getting another one, and as long as they get it, by the time we make the placements, we can kind of make everybody, you know, hopefully everyone will land where they want to be.
Perfect, okay, that's great. Thank you, and I have another question, too. Well, you'll be working, once, you know, we vote this in, and they make the move, you'll be taking feedback and that from the staff as well?
Absolutely.
To, yeah, try to work with them and.
We're going to have kind of a, kind of a town hall-style faculty meeting, where we're able to tell everyone about the survey, about what we're doing, and answer any questions, but we, like I said, that's why we need the grace and the time to do the scheduling, have more time, we need, we need faculty input.
Yes.
Faculty, ESPs, AAs, custodians, like, everybody. We always say the answers are in the room, and so we need to ask.
Yep.
So, yeah, we'll definitely be taking input as it goes.
So when you're making up the schedules, I'm sorry, I'm harping on this, you'll ask for their feedback during that time?
Absolutely.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All righty now, what's next? Does anybody have any questions for the school committee at all? Zoe? Carrie? All righty, so, are we going to vote now on this, or?
I think you want to take public comment first, just in case. That's why we placed it there in the schedule.
Yes, that's right there, it's right there, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to speak? Public comment? Does anyone have any comments or suggest, not suggestions? Well, you, yeah, you can comment.
Comments, yes.
Sure.
Do you feel that this timeline, it's a little overlonged? In six months, it's really going to be seven months. Do you feel that everything can be done in that seven months, so that it's a smooth transition for all of them?
I think we're going to try. I do feel it's, I'll repeat it, because I'm on a mic, but you're not, so thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
You know, it, does it feel a little rushed? Is it a short timeframe? We keep saying this, yes, and so we're putting all our effort into it, like, all of our principal meetings are about this, like, we're really prioritizing it, so that hopefully we can do it fast enough so that our staff feels that sense of calm, at least I know where I'm going and what's happening. Because ultimately, I feel like we have to do it, the alternative is going to be overcrowded classrooms and, you know, student-teacher ratios that are too big, and so, do, I feel it's a lot of work in a shorter amount of time, yes, but I also feel that we started a few years ago with the conversation, so it could be a lot worse than it is now, and I feel like this team has been incredible and everyone has given input, so I feel we can accomplish it, but yes, it's a heavy lift. Yeah, thanks for asking.
I was just thinking that, even from our last meeting to what you guys have all presented and pulled together is incredible.
Unbelievable, yeah, 100%.
The amount of work that you have done in one month's time is incredible, so I think you all.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be intense, yeah, for you, yeah, it will be, but you guys have done a great job.
But just to see what they've pulled off in one month's time.
Right.
I think six or seven months, yeah, I think you can make it happen.
Yeah. Well, again, my hope is that most of the big things, which is staffing and budget, the next steps, they've got to be done by March. You know, and then it's the finishing of the hiring and the transition activities, that's the fun stuff, that's when the kids get to see the spaces and all that, so.
Right.
Then the moving and the, and kind of the facelift will happen in the summer. So I do feel like, thankfully, because we started last year and we had summer work, and, you know, we kind of hit the ground running in, in September with this, even though it was like, oh, really, are we talking about this in the first, first meeting of September? I can't imagine what this would be like if we were talking about this in January, it would, it would really not be doable, so.
And the, the building teams have done so much work, I think the principals and their teams have such a strong eye on what is needed for their individual building.
Right.
And they really have just done so much work, so, you know, really to commend them, but I think when that work comes together, it does sort of seem overwhelming, and then it's like Liz brings her piece, and Noel brings her piece, and it really came together, and so on and so forth, not just the two of them, but I think.
A lot of work.
The building, the building teams have done so much work, so.
Right, right. All righty, anybody else would like to come? Sure.
I understand the crowded at the elementary level, but I, I just am curious about the eighth grade, is there like an urgent need to move them? I'm just curious why we can't have this, six, seven, eight in the middle school.
Do you want to take that, Dr. Joe?
Sure, I don't know if the folks at home could hear, so I'll repeat what I think I heard.
Oh, yes, please.
And I'm sorry, I can't see you either.
It was a little crowded when I came in.
No, that's okay, so the question was, you know, why the choice to, as a complete one move up, to have eighth grade at the high school instead of having four grades at the middle school? And I think, in our opinion, and kind of what was talked about last, at the last meeting, it would very quickly become overcrowded at the middle school, there were four grades there at one point, and it was, it was crowded already, and what we're seeing with the enrollment coming up is, within a year or two, it would be overcrowded. So with all of this movement, we'd kind of rather get it right once and do all of the move up, because we do have the space for a complete wing here, and I, I think, I think ultimately, it will be a really, a really positive thing. I mean, that's my individual opinion, but I don't want to speak for the committee.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I think it's just giving the eighth graders so much opportunity, you know, with, you know, the academics, the pathways, I think that's going to be really exciting. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but I guess it comes back to the point, I just have another comment.
Sure.
The timeframe and feeling rushed and it being intense, I think, was the word that was used. If there's not a dire need to move the eighth grade right now, does it make sense to adjust the elementary school and get that right, and really focus on the transition there? And then, you know, once they're settled, do it, so it's not a super intense rushed process?
Would you like to take that?
Through the chair, sure, I mean, I'm just, I'm just giving my own opinion.
Yes, yeah.
And all the planning that we've seen, it would be, if this were in a multi-step process, it would actually be that the eighth grade would move first and then adjust the rest, but that wouldn't accomplish what, what we need to happen at Bourne Dale.
At BIS, yeah.
Because if we, as soon as we move one grade, it's going to become overcrowded there really quickly, and then we'd be moving and we'd be moving, so, I mean, I personally think this is the best plan, and doing it all at once, I think, makes the most sense. I know we might still think about neighborhood schools in the future, but I, I think that we'd be pretty good with this plan for a little while, enrollment-wise.
Right.
We could choose to never go to neighborhood schools, and I think, you know, depending on what happens with housing.
Right.
So, yeah, I know, in the earlier conversations, a lot of the listening sessions, people asked that if you're going to do it, please just try to do it once, and do it all at the same time. So, I feel like it's, it's definitely doable, and, and honestly, I think because we have the room here at the high school to kind of do these moves, it's kind of the least impact, it's the easier thing to accomplish.
And most fiscally responsible, too.
Yeah, whereas kind of overcrowding in the middle school, I think, would cause a lot more problems.
Can I, oh, sorry.
I was going to say, I think that was the point of the survey you had for space. It was clear from that, that the high school was an abundance of space, of all the space issues that might be going on with the other schools, the high school sat there as, this is an abundance of space here, and it's an opportunity, and then in looking at all the different options, it was considering, do we move the younger grades over there to this space? And that didn't seem.
No.
It, it was more problematic than moving eighth graders, which would have most likely more benefits to them moving up than all the other negatives. So I think that was also what drove the decision, was seeing all this space here, having that study done, and making it so implicitly clear, you have all this space, you need to move things around, what's going to move to the high school? And it seemed to make the most sense, and probably provide the most benefit to eighth graders, to any group, to move the eighth graders here. So I think that's why in the decisions, that's why that's part of that cascade, starting here, where we had the most space.
Yeah, and to that point, the NASDAQ, NASDAQ organization never recommended putting four into the middle school, the recommendation was always a one or a two move up, and so[1598.97] that's why it really wasn't, wasn't looked at as feasible. We looked at it when people said some things on the surveys and in the listening sessions, but again, we came to the same conclusion that it wasn't the best move.
I think we also.
I was gonna say the same. The data showed that it made the most sense to move every, to move everybody one grade up. We looked at multiple different options that they presented us with and it that seemed to be the option that made the most sense with the data that came back from the, the, what was that?
Listening.
Or the NAS.
The NAS.
Yeah, the NAS. Yeah. I was writing the same point as you.
I was also gonna say just the, even just, you know, what the other districts do around us. And a lot of them have eighth grade.
Eighth grade in the.
At the high school.
Or seventh grade, too.
Or even seventh grade, which we decided absolutely, we didn't want to do that. And that came very clear through the, through all the sessions and surveys. But so it's not like we're, you know, making a new path of like, let's, let's try eighth grade at the high school. This has been done all around us. And so.
Do you have a specific concern that you'd like to bring up or?
No, I was just curious.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your question. Anybody else?
And I do know we have more of the student advisory here. So I see them sitting out there.
Yes.
Hi, guys. Do you, I don't want to put any of you on the spot, but I don't know if they wanted to say anything as well.
No.
We have a great group of students.
I'm just listening. Like, I think I've pretty, like, I've voiced any, like, concerns, questions I've had, like, directly to you and like our advisory meetings. Obviously, like, we're gonna be seniors next year when, like, the transition is in full action. And similar to the other concerns that were voiced about, like, the timeframe of the move, my only worry is that, like, when we get to our senior year and we're, like, making that transition into, like, internships and, like, really diving into the pathways that we've been working towards and, like, kind of trying to wrap up our, like, kind of just, like, school career, like, as a sum. I'm just, like, a little bit worried that, like, that's kind of gonna, like, get, like, taken away from maybe, just because there's gonna be, like, a lot going on. And so therefore, the concern isn't gonna be, like, as much on that, like, wrapping up the bar.
Yeah, I hear you. And so just the thought that this, this is not a retractor, it's an additive. So in adding the eighth grade, we would want to make sure that your experience as a, as a junior or a senior is still, you know, is still stellar. So, you know, we're gonna be keenly aware of that, too. And that's why we're gonna talk with juniors and seniors to kind of make sure that those are really your grade level events, that things happening for you are all still, you know, at where they are even better. That's our hope.
Yeah. No, I fully trust that we'll be able to, like, make sure it all goes, like, well, because I'm, like, obviously a part of, like, a multitude of groups that, but I feel like I discuss this, like, every other week. So I know, I know that it'll all work itself out. I'm not worried.
I think part of, just one thing to add to that, too, is one of the things that we've talked about at every meeting is that idea of maintaining the teaming for the eighth grade. And as you kind of may remember from being an eighth grader, like, that team is the support, right? That you have those same four teachers and they are supporting you. So I think, and then when you're talking about all of the other really exciting 12th grade things that you get to consider, there's separate staff that works on that, right? Mrs. Strode is a big piece of that.
Yeah.
Your guidance counselors are a big piece of that. So I think, yes, there might be more going on in the building, but different staff people are kind of responsible for managing the student needs in those two areas. And so I think that is just something to keep in mind, too, that it, that there, it's a huge goal, that it not negatively impact anyone's experience that's here already as we're moving students up.
That's perfect, yes. And Mrs. Strode is amazing. You guys know that. She's not gonna let that happen at all. I can assure you of that.
Of course.
Alrighty.
One question.
Sure.
Do you see it getting crowded here at all, with eighth grade?
I don't. Because knowing kind of the enrollment that was here before, this school has a capacity for 900 students. And that's what that study showed, too, that there's a lot of room. What we did over the course of time is we've created some specialized rooms. If you think about, you know, some of the animatage lab and the cybersecurity lab and the business suite, like, all of these rooms, you know, used to be just classrooms, but now they're really specialized spaces. So we didn't want to lose that. And that's why we didn't want to bring up seventh as well and for developmental reasons. But we know, especially after the study, that everybody will be able to fit, that the staff will be appropriate for the different grade levels. And I think there'll be, like, a positive buzz in, in the hallways, you know, because sometimes it's a little quiet here, right? But we do think that we have a nice, quiet school, but then there'll be a positive buzz where it feels, it feels really good. So we'll attend to those needs of the eighth graders to make sure that they understand our high school B2B values, right, and how they should act as a high schooler. But also, we want to make sure that it really keeps that, that canalman pride that's here and kind of have more canalmen that are officially part of this high school. So one of the other things that came up was around athletics and clubs and such. So as an eighth grader, they'd be allowed to be in all the athletics and clubs as full high schoolers. So that will be really great. They're not walking across, you know, walking across a parking lot and, you know, going from a hat where I'm an eighth grader to now I'm trying to be on a JV team. And so I think that you'll see even whether it be behavior or kind of the way they act, even stepping up just another notch because of the official high school canalman. Yeah. Hope that answers your question. Yeah.
That's our goal, though, is to have the high school overcrowded, right? That is like a dream. We'll get there. Alrighty. Okay. Do we want to vote or do we have any more discussion or anything? Do you guys want to vote now?
Let's vote now.
Yes.
On our list.
Should I move?
Yes, is there a motion?
On the move one grade up plan.
A second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
No.
Um, all opposed, say no. Any abstentions? All right. The motion passes unanimously for the one grade up.
Thank you for your support. And now we continue to get to work.
Alrighty, okay. Thank you. All right.
Okay. So we have another presentation for you about our MCAS and accountability scores.
Okay.
So I'm gonna actually hand it over to Mrs. Borning and queue that up. And our principals will be part of that as well. And then we'll dismiss our principals after they get to tell you about their calendar events.
Yeah, it's been a long day.
Because, you know, it becomes a very long night.
Oh, yes.
For everyone. But we're excited and they gave us an awful lot of input on these. So here we go. Mrs. Borning.
All right.
So an overview providing, our goal here is to provide an overview both of the accountability system and then, of course, of our MCAS scores for 2025. So the accountability system, kind of as a refresher, if you've been here before, if you've not, new information for you. The Massachusetts Accountability System contains two parts. There's a normative component where they're comparing our school against our schools, against other schools of similar enrollment, grades bands, and then a criterion reference component where they're setting targets for improvement. And then they're measuring us against how we do meeting or not meeting those targets. Those areas include achievement, so just our straight MCAS scores. Also student growth, though. How did our students do compared, their growth compared to other students that started at the same relative place as them? So we're looking for a strong student growth percentile. We look at high school completion, English learner proficiency. That tends to be a smaller subgroup for us, but it is a subgroup that's considered. And then some additional indicators that you'll see. And all of those things together are used to categorize schools and districts as requiring assistance or intervention or not. If we go to the next page, I can't get to. So to jump right to the chase, our accountability score for this year is that we've made, if we are at 56%, we've made substantial progress towards our targets. So, sorry, nope. So this really just shows where we fall kind of in terms of everybody else. So we are for 2020, we were actually the same ranking for 2024 as well, but making substantial progress towards our targets. That is the largest group of where schools fall, so we're right in the mix. And then that little bracket below shows kind of all of the choices. So it reads kind of the opposite. It reads from right to left, if, from lowest to highest, but we are at the third highest possible. So we've made substantial progress towards our targets. The better rankings would be meeting or exceeding our targets, or a school of recognition. But again, we're right in the mix with the majority of schools in terms of making substantial progress towards our targets, which is good news. Oh, you know what? Okay. A little bit of a, so this actually, in your report, if you have this open, you can click through where it says accountability report. You can click through and get to the whole report, but I'm just gonna summarize a few key components. And this reads from left to right. So all students for our non-high schools, so that would be our three, third through eighth graders, lowest performing students, which is one specific subgroup that we're measured on, which is the lowest essentially quartile, 25% of students. They're looking at their individual growth, making sure that our students who are struggling the most are in fact making progress. And then it looks at those same two categories, all students and lowest performing students for high school. One thing to note about high school that is a challenge is it's one grade. It's just one specific cohort. And for us, it's a small amount of students. We're often looking at less than 100 students. So one student's performance can have a significant impact on our rankings as opposed to kind of when we look three through, three through eight, where it's a larger group of students. And also, again, I think the other piece just to note about high school is that this year, our high school students and all of our students did know that MCAS did not count towards graduation. So although I think we saw some nice effort across the board, it was potentially not the same level of effort when they know that it does not require, it's not required for high school graduation. And when you're looking at this, so just a couple of things, non-high school includes grades three through eight, math and ELA, and five and eight science. It also, this year, for the first time ever statewide, included grade eight civics. High school, we're looking at grade 10, math and ELA. And those same students, their bio scores from ninth grade. So when we're talking about these high school scores, it's actually this year's juniors, 10th grade math and ELA, ninth grade bio. They're looking at aggregate data. So again, all students and then subgroup data. The ones that really stand out for us are the lowest performing students with disabilities, our EL students and our high needs students. And again, they're measuring both achievement and progress towards the targets that are set by the state. Okay. So some district highlights for us. We had significant improvement in our subgroup data. And this is really important. This is looking at our students at our highest need. And we saw that 42% of our students with disabilities were making progress, making, meeting the target in 2024 versus 66% of our students in 2025. That is a huge improvement for our students. And again, with our high needs group of students, 42% meeting the target in 2024 versus 54% in 2025. We improved in all areas in non-high school math and ELA. So improving towards the target, meeting the target or exceeding the target. We exceeded the target in multiple non-high school subgroups, including our lowest performing students for both math and ELA, our high needs students for ELA, EL students for math and ELA, and students with disabilities for ELA. So I think this is really, we're starting to see the impact of many of the things that we've been doing, whether it be our co-teaching practices, our interventions, and just really strengthening that support for students across the board. It's nice to see some growth in that. Our non-high school students had typical growth high in all areas and subgroups in math and ELA. And we exceeded the target for advanced coursework completion by high school students. And again, I point that out because I think MCAS is a really interesting bar for high school kids right now because they do know that it does not count towards graduation. But to see our students exceeding the target for advanced coursework, something that's very, I think, important to them and meaningful to them, is really important to see that our students are performing at the high school level in areas that they find really meaningful. So I'm gonna quickly turn it over to Noel.
Good thing I brought my phone.
Sorry.
So we are on ERA. Hello, everybody. I apologize. I'm having trouble seeing that far. So looking at BRS's grade three through five and the ERA, I'm gonna actually focus on, oh, your slides look differently than mine do. So I'll look up that way. In grades three through five, we had 54% of our students partially meeting in ERA. One of the biggest takeaways that we saw with the partially meeting is in the graph that we're actually looking at, we're able to isolate the students that were right on the cusp of meeting expectations. So where 54% were partially meeting, we had 87 students that were within that 10-point window. So that is a huge focus for us right now. Our ERA performance is trending in the positive direction with fewer students not meeting expectations. So our not meeting had decreased in last, past school year. And we have fewer students who are not meeting expectations compared to previous years. Is that?
I'm gonna try to get it in the Canva version because something might have gone wrong. So just give me a second.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, I know. It's gross. With my technological magic. No, you cannot see my password.
John L is the best.
That'll be my next password.
Just give me one second. So I think it will make it a little bigger, too.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My eyes are getting worse by the day, I think.
Well, it's late, too.
No, thank you.
I just literally just shared it. I know. Thanks for your patience.
I'm happy to also discuss some of the actions that we're gonna be doing.
I'll just try refreshing it now.
I think, yeah, there you go.
See if the magic works. All right.
I don't know if we get to call that magic, but. So she's on slide 10.
Thank you.
I think you can blow it up at the bottom there.
Just going a little slow. I apologize. All right.
Okay. So thank you. So looking at our next steps, we are looking to continue strengthening the alignment between our core ERA instruction, which is ARC, and Empowering Writers and NUFLY within the Mass State frameworks. Empowering Writers is a writing program that was brought back this year to BRS. And Lisa Dix, who is not here tonight, has done an amazing job working with the teachers in professional development, not only in the training of Empowering Writers, but also the crosswalk between ARC, which is the leading program, and the writing program. So we're not working in CIRIS, kind of going back to our literacy blocks. We're also gonna be emphasizing explicit vocabulary, comprehension strategies, and writing response to reading to move students from that partially meeting to meeting. That was one of the areas that we had identified that needed a focus, again, combining the reading comprehension skills and strategies within the writing. And then a target for the not meeting, ensuring fidelity to the intervention programs within our wing group. And also kind of going back to that, our literacy block, we use our literacy block workshop time for very explicit tiered instruction for our students that are on below as well as above grade level. Oh, oh, thank you. So in our math, we are looking, we have some great news in regards to the implementation of our math workshop. The percentage of students not meeting expectations has dropped steadily from 21% in 21 to 16% in 25. The meeting category has remained relatively stable between 77 and 31% without significant long-term growth. The exceeding category has stayed around the 3% to 4% showing limited expansion for those high-level performances. As far as next steps go, we are continuing to emphasize our math workshop within those routines on a, on a daily basis. We are increasing the use of math discourse, so the conversations and the reasoning within math workshop and open-ended problems to push that partially meeting student group into the meeting group and ensuring all teachers are using formatives such as exit tickets within their daily lessons and then spending time to focus on enrichment during RIN to boost the exceeding students. And then as far as science goes, we have several years with no students exceeding in 2025, so 6% exceeding and a positive site for those students. So science has been one of our great highlights. I know that fifth grade teachers really enjoy the science. The partially meeting group has remained fairly consistent between 47 and 50% across all five years. The not meeting has decreased from 20% in 23 to 16% in 25, showing improvement for our struggling students. Some of the next, oh, sorry. Some of the next steps is use student work to analyze protocols and pinpoint very specific skill gaps. We're gonna be providing small group opportunities for scaffold or lab experiences to help our students move into that meeting. And then reviewing the curriculum pacing and assessments for consistency between grades and cohorts at BIS. So, any questions?
May I ask what an exit ticket is?
So an exit ticket is an informal assessment that can be done in actually any of the courses. And it's where the teacher may pose a question at the end and the students have to literally write on a little ticket before handing it out. So it's a quick, it's a dipstick for a teacher to see how many students were able to grasp the skill and the expectation for that lesson.
Nice.
And it can be done also during the class, maybe at the end of a whole group, while the students are moving into the workshop. So the student, the teacher can do a quick formative assessment to know which kiddos they would want to pull together for their small group's differential.
Oh, that's a great little trick. Yeah, I like that.
So summative assessments, think of it like your end of unit test. It's kind of the bigger tests.
Yes.
Quizzes. But formative assessments, you're forming an opinion. That's how I remember it. And so it's these smaller kind of bite-sized assessments, just all along the way to see if kids are really with you.
Yeah. Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
I can't coin, I didn't coin the term, but it's.
Well, no, it's, yes. Thanks.
And now we'll move to Bourne Middle School.
Can I just ask a quick question on the, can you go back to the math slide for a minute?
Sure.
Okay, never mind.
Okay. You answered it.
All right. So I'm, for the middle school. So Jessie's not here today, but Jessie did collaborate. Jessie comments with me on these. So I do want to give that a little shout out. So really, a lot of good news at the middle school. You can see that meeting rate exceeding increased by 6%. The average student growth percentile, 5% to 53%. And students not meeting decreased by 3%. So I think a common theme that you'll see in all of these slides, we have all four content areas, ERA, math, science, and civics, is really aligned to our zip and focused on the instructional core. So we want to make sure that across content, students are getting rigorous grade level content. There are some specifics on each side. And then a little focus on what the teacher's doing and what the students are doing in class. So specific to ERA, we have implemented a literacy lab. Sarah Riggle, who has a reading specialist background, is teaching grade six course. Angela Redbarrow is teaching grade seven and eight using Vividing Results, which is a new program we're piloting that I'm excited about. Our English teachers have gotten the Empowering Writers PD, which you heard about earlier. And again, it's ensuring fidelity to springboard and grade level content. And then the use of RIN really based on data. And I actually had a meeting with the data team this afternoon, and certainly the kids involved. involved, we do need to target those skill deficits. But we have a lot of students in the gray, so we want to see every student at Bourne Middle School grow this year. And that gray is a big chunk of students that aren't quite meeting expectations, so giving them opportunities to be pushed. And same thing with the blue. We have some really cool, deeper learning opportunities in WIN for students in the blue that I'm excited about, that we're hoping to roll out in the next couple of weeks.
Nice.
So we can go into math. We've had so much success with the math workshop model. You can see that our data for math looks really good. Average SGP up to 57%. As I talked about when we served up the SIP, 60% to 70%. If we can get SGP up to 60%, stretch growth to 70, we will really see those red numbers decrease. So continuation of the math workshop model, we do have a math lab using Delta Math, which our math consultant, Allison Meller, has worked with the team on. The WIN math teachers are also using Delta Math for their WIN interventions. And we do have a teacher that will be doing a project-based learning math, deeper learning opportunity for students that are in the blue. Science, so we had a slight increase by 1%. They don't measure SGP for science. We did purchase iXL, so iXL is something that the middle school continues to use. Content teachers use it in classroom. They assign it for students to do at home, and they continue to use it in WIN. This year, we have iXL for grade eight, science, and for civics. It was mentioned earlier, continue collaboration with our consultant on phenomena-based inquiry model for students. We're working with our consultant and our teachers. Desi has some pretty clear grade-level look-for, so around a concept and a practice and how those are aligned to grade-level standards. So those are things we're looking for, what we're walking through classrooms and supporting teachers on during comment planning time. And same thing, using WIN to get students what they need. Last is civics. So last year was the first year of the civics MCAS exam. Our 8th grade teachers have done a lot of work around analyzing the questions that were asked, how those questions were asked, and how in classrooms, in the 8th grade civics classrooms, we're preparing students to have the skills to answer those questions. Having said that, we're going to continue the civic action project, which students love, there's student agency there, and it's something that we feel is really important. I think one other thing I will say is that I think we recognize that these skills are not only taught in 8th grade, so we are working with our grade six and seven teachers, that their instruction is aligned to investigating history, which is the curriculum that they use as well. So I think we've done a lot of work on analysis, and it's work we're going to continue to do this year with our 8th grade.
Nice.
Can I ask you a question on math? Can you just go back to the math one?
Yes.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't want to be Debbie Downer, but I'm just looking at, I mean, we're looking at 70% to 80% that are either only partially meeting or not meeting of all of our students. So that seems like a lot. I mean, I know there's so many good things going on in pieces, but if 70% of our students aren't fully meeting, I'm just kind of questioning it. Is it a curriculum thing? Is it a teaching thing? Is it, I mean, I'm sure it's multifaceted, but I just, that really is, 70% is a lot of students that aren't actually meeting.
Right. There are certainly many more students below the dotted line, and that is a lot of students. I think the win there is that if you look in the blue, we did bump students up. I do think the math workshop model was a huge part of that. I've heard Noel talk about what's happening in that elementary school and bringing math workshop to the elementary school. To me, it's sort of what we talked about with civics, where it just doesn't happen at the 8th grade level, it's what's happening below it. So I think we've had a lot of success with the consultant that we brought in last year and between the math workshop model, the math lab this year, which is new this year, with the Delta Math interventions and what we're doing at WIN. I agree that that's concerning, that I think that we have good interventions in place and that the curriculum that we're using is going, that we're going to continue to see positive growth.
Yeah. I do have to say, just my experience with the math lab and the ERA lab, kudos to you guys, because it's been really, really positive experience from those kids that I know that are in.
That's good to hear. Yeah. I mean, I think we are iterating on the math lab, right? Like, and really, having students set individual math goals, right? The class sizes are smaller, so we can really focus individually on what students need, and having students be part of setting those goals. And then I think implementing Delta Math has been a win. So yes, concerning, but I do think we are on a good path to continue to see improvement.
Yeah, I'll take it from a district lens, too, because, I mean, we want to be transparent. We're showing you the numbers. This is not new since I've been here.
Well, math, I mean, clearly, even the numbers, they haven't really changed much in, you know, five years.
And so these are definitely the pandemic numbers. As Mrs. Boring said, across the state, everything dropped. And so especially at the 10th grade. That doesn't mean to say that we don't want all of our kids to succeed. We want to push them all over it. But the thing that gives us not just hope, but tells us that all the planning that we've done, all the interventions that we've done are working, is the student growth scores are really high. So that's why we highlighted that. And that means the individual student, year over year, is making gains of one grade or more. So we know that over time, if we kind of just keep going, stick with the plan, you'll start to see some real gains. Because traditionally, at least in the past year since just prior to me coming, and then now this time that we've been working, we haven't seen very high scores. But we do believe that we're seeing that creep up. Because the interesting piece about, this is achievement. When you look at these scores, this is purely achievement. The accountability system accounts for the targets that are set. Because every school has their own target set by Desi that is the incremental growth that they think that you should make in a year. We're seeing more growth than they thought that we could make. That's why I said substantially. So we're not sugarcoating it. We are not there yet. We are not one of the W's districts, right? Where we have these achievement scores that are out the roof, and they've always had that. But I think, I feel confident we're making the growth that we need to make, that over time, we'll start to see some big differences. And especially in that math, I know, I agree with you 100%. There's more gray and red below the line. I always look at the line. But if you look at the blue, we're starting to see a bounce back, and that's really important. And individual students in the mix had SGP scores that were 57%. That's huge. Those scores are really high. So we think that we're making up ground, and we'll see over the next few years. My hope is we'll start to see this curve going up.
I have one.
Absolutely.
Thanks. I think, I think there's two pieces of this as well, that there's, we're looking at, you know, when we look at those subgroups, we're looking at interventions, and we're looking at really targeting, you've heard all of the principals say, like, targeting those gaps for students who are our lowest 25% or targeting the gaps for students who have that. I think when you are looking at a graph like this one, where you're seeing relative stability and a huge amount of students in that gray area, it's, and, you know, one of the things we did last year was really analyze, like, how far into the gray are they? And many of them are close, like within 10 points, which is, can sometimes be like two questions, three questions. They're very close to meeting. And so I think that's where, you've heard this continued theme, and I have a slide, if you want to actually flip to like the last slide of the whole thing.
Oops.
Second to last, I guess. You can see that I've highlighted tier one. That's a tier one component, right? Are we teaching at grade level? Are we covering the standards at grade level? Are the students, and you heard Lisa say it as well, like, what are the students doing? What are the teachers doing? And is, are those activities at grade level and really addressing the standards? And that is what, is what all of our professional development has been about for the past two to three years, and our continued professional development focus. So I think, hopefully, you really will see that take root in terms of, we're already seeing that start to creep up with our students that have the largest gaps, and then really start to see it take hold just across the board that, like, because I think the other piece is, once you kind of drop a little bit below the standards in your instruction, it's easy to live there. So kind of boosting it back up to like, oh, no, this is the rigor that the frameworks are asking. So science is a good example. Yes, we're covering the topics in science, but are we covering the practices and the phenomena? So it's really like, okay, getting that professional learning in and boosting that back up. And I think math workshop has been such a clear example of that, of, oh, that's what the framework is asking, and here are tasks that can get at that framework. And so we've really just seen our teachers dive into that work head-on, and I think we've saw, you know, some examples of growth last year, but I think we're really poised to see some significant growth, hopefully, across the board. Certainly, I think, again, I don't want to be negative about the, about the high school, but I think we're going to continue to see fluctuation based on the cohort at the high school. I think really looking at that three to eight cohort and kind of what they're doing and where they're moving is important.
Yeah. And I would say the other piece that we've noticed, which is why you're seeing in our SIPs of real focus on writing, is that sometimes those two or three questions are really a couple of points in the writing, where the kids fell short and maybe didn't like fully explain their thinking. So, you know, there's, there's a certain way to answer these questions, and the questions are asked in a certain way. And if they're not used to those questions being asked and them having to give full details or full evidence, cite your evidence, we're seeing a lot of points missed in those things. So some of it isn't, isn't just teaching to the test as far as the standards, but it's teaching them how to take these tests and have the stamina. So there's a lot to it. Like you said, it's a lot of facets.
And one important thing to note, because we saw some relatively strong growth with our math scores, and also some nice growth with our ERA, they moved to, for the first time, AI scoring of the essays in the ERA portion. And the essays are a huge component of the points. So if you're not getting the essay points, then that's, that's really a challenge in terms of meeting and exceeding, accomplishing meeting and exceeding. So I think we did see that those essays were potentially scored a little differently, a little more harshly. We saw some nice essays where we feel like, okay, these would have been maybe a full credit, you know, eight, the total of eight points in the past, where they might have been seven or six points this year. So I think there's also that, adjusting to that. And we've actually moved to utilizing AI scoring for some of our writing benchmarks so that we can then be giving the students similar, like, AI feedback and looking at it under that neutral AI lens.
It was the first year they used completely AI for all the ERA writing. Yeah. So the whole state dipped. I mean, I'm not trying to make an excuse, but it is an interesting phenomenon that the first year they score with AI instead of real people, because you had real teachers reading them. They could kind of understand what a child was getting at, like, oh, I know what they mean, and they'd give them the extra point. But AI does not care about that. So they're just scoring based on, so if something wasn't legible, or if it just kind of was spelled too wrong, they weren't given the benefit of the doubt. So we did, we saw that, just like the state, we saw it across the board. So Christine will present on the high school.
May I just go back to the middle school for a moment, please? Did Ms. Moore win an award?
She did.
For civics?
It was mine. Yeah, it was in the newsletter. She did win an award for civics.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's so great. That's so good. Thank you. Yeah. Thought I saw that on Facebook.
Yeah, she got a grant from Close Up, which is the foundation that we work with for our DC teachers.
Yes.
Yeah. They are very invested civics teachers, for sure.
Oh, they really are. Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. So I think the, you know, the main message on the high school is that you can, you know, where you're seeing like really stable graphs at the lower levels, you're seeing like much more variability in the graph at the high school level. And of course, you know, you're seeing significantly more red. Now, I will say, and I think this is, I'm glad that they wrote it out this way, 26% of our students not meeting, that's 17 students. So it's not, when you see 26%, that's like, oh, my God, you know, a quarter. Well, yeah, it's a quarter of a relatively small number. So I think, again, not to say that's okay, I do think that is 17 students who knew that they did not need to pass this test. And that's a real challenge for the high school, and not just ours, high schools everywhere.
And all of our students need to take it if they're in. And some students have some significant absenteeism. Again, we try to work with them, but you're seeing a real correlation between absenteeism and the ability to take these tests.
I think similarly, you're seeing, you know, a similar impact with the math scores. And then the biology, again, I think we're seeing, just again, a cohort-based score. We're still continuing all of the same work around tier-one instruction, around using, at the high school, they're using this Albert IO, which is a program that has like a base of questions, and it's, provides a lot of review and practice.
It is so helpful.
Love it.
I used it last year. A lot of AP teachers use it. I used it before all my exams. It teaches you how to test really well.
Wow. Oh, that's awesome.
So we've seen that expand to a variety of courses in the high school, and we actually did talk about what that would, what it would look like to put it, you know, just have a full school account for it, which I don't think is prohibitive. I'm not going to believe it, or the high school. But yeah, so to go to this last slide, I think, I certainly don't need to read all these things. You've heard about many of them tonight already. But I think the most important component is, we do have teachers who have heavily invested in their own professional development. They've been very invested in the district-level professional development. We have, you know, worked and continue our working relationships with consultants in almost every area to really hone those tier-one instructional strategies and to make sure that our common understanding of the frameworks in every area is, you know, there, and that we're, we're working towards making sure that students are achieving that. And then I think, again, beyond all the tier-one stuff, which, so, you know, just as a reminder, tier-one is what all students are receiving. Then we have our additional tiered supports, where we have interventionists K through five. Lisa spoke nicely about the courses that they added at the middle school, the math and ERA lab, some real targeted supports there. We have data teams in each school, and of course, we have our MTSS team. So lots of, lots of ways that we're tackling this, to kindle into your point, I think, to really see the growth. I think for me, it's always been about, we know our students, we, they're performing at a much higher level, like, on our local things, on their AP exams, on things like that. So it's kind of get that to transfer on the MCAS, I think, is important.
Thank you.
So that is that. Thank you so much. And thank you, principals.
Thank you.
Thank you. So unless there's no more questions about this, I'd like to take superintendent's report out of order and do our announcements and correspondence next, so that our really amazing principals can head home. So if you wouldn't mind me doing that, come up in any order you'd like.
All right. So shorter month, shorter list of events here, but also certainly not less important. On the 12th, we have our Veterans Day slideshow. We're able to write letters to veterans and send them off. We have a lot of families send us names of people who are currently deployed overseas, so we're very fortunate to be able to participate in that. We also have them email letters. I probably have about 10 letters already that people who are deployed have sent me, and we surprise the kids with those during lunches. So it's just a really nice day to celebrate, and it's fun hearing the stories from the families. The next day is World Kindness Day, so we're incorporating our theme, Words in Your Heart will be the focus. And we have PTA Family Fun Night that night with Ryan's tall tales. And on the 18th, our grade-two students are, again, going to the Cape Head Symphony and attending the Young People's Concert. It's on orchestra moves. And then one of the things we're really looking forward to, although we're still settling a date, is bringing Dr. Galnet, Julie Galnet, in. It's a really great community partnership we have with her. We'll be starting with our grade-two students. She and her staff come in and teach each of the classrooms about dental safety and hygiene, and they bring in little kits for each student and send them home with. So it's a really nice way to start the students off, right? And they, they really enjoy those. So about 20 minutes, but it's a, it's a perfect way to get the message out.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. I just said to Liz, I'm at the point in my brain, and my mouth are not working together, so I apologize. Before I get into what's coming up this month, which is a short month, I have been asked by Mrs. Webberby. BIS has launched its first, cut off the first issue of the BIS Beacon, which is our newspaper, so I'm going to hand that to Ms. Donnie, if she can pass it around after. We have our first student-run newspaper that is a WIN group. So currently, it is currently fourth and fifth graders with this issue, but it'll change every, well, it'll be this once a month right now, but as we get into the swing of things, we'll be able to do it a little bit more often. So that was, I was asked to share that with all of you. As far as November goes, we are excited on Monday, the 10th, at 9:00 AM, to welcome our veterans to BIS, our family members. This is an annual event that Amory Riedings has done for many, many years. Those of you that know Mrs. Riedings knows that she is very dedicated to our military families. So along with the help of Maggie Smith, they organize a wonderful breakfast for our military families, and our students get to come down and enjoy that with them. On Wednesday, November 12th, On Wednesday, November 12th through Friday, November 14th, students will have a chance to cash in their BIS tickets for school, for the school store, the new school store, for fun BIS swag. And thanks to our amazing PTA, there is, I haven't seen the list, but I guess there's a wide variety of prizes that the students can purchase with their PBIS tickets that day, and they'll also see things that they can buy down the road. That might be bigger ticket items. Mrs. Trot is in talks with the Born Fire Department for a ride on the fire truck. We also have been speaking with Teresa Clever's husband, who you know that we do all of our BIS swag through for some sweatshirts and things like that. So, we're super excited. This is our first school store launch, and I know, I know the kids are thrilled to do that. On Thursday, November 13th, at 8:45, our third graders will enjoy our annual tradition with members of the Wampanoag Tribe. They come every year to visit with our third graders to share traditions, their history, their culture, and it's definitely one of our favorite days for our third graders. Then, on Wednesday, November 19th, from 5:00 to 6:00, we have a new event at BIS, which is our PTA will be hosting a family bingo night, and it's a candy bingo night, where for every bar of candy you bring in, you'll be able to get a bingo board, and then there'll be prizes. So, the amount of candy bars you bring in will be the amount of boards you get. So, I'm super excited. This is something that Mrs. Trot has brought to BIS from events with her own kiddos. And then, finally, on Monday and Tuesday, November 24th and 25th, all of BIS will come together for a school-wide community-building event to celebrate what we are thankful for. So, our MTSS team is going to be meeting to plan some activities to show our thanks and our giving for, for BIS. So, we wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I have a couple of, well, I'll make it quick, so you guys aren't here.
That's okay.
So, do you have a group that does this, or do you kind of take turns?
Yes, so what we have done is we revamped, part of our master schedule, we revamped our WIN this year. So, we have WIN at the same time, where in the past it was three different times. And Mary Rehberde is working with students to enrich their writing skills and their exposure for writing. So, it'll be anything from opinion writing, you'll see there's some advice columns, and then they will be, you know, comparing different things in events at the school. So, yes, it is a daily, well, it's six out of the seven days.
So, everybody has an opportunity.
Everybody will have an opportunity to participate. We're going to be looking at some freelance writers that might be working with other teachers, so that, I know there's only so many students we can fit in the library, but there's other teachers in other grades, but it's going to be a cross-grade level work. So, I think I had a fourth and fifth grader come in and interview me, and they were snapping pictures like they were, you know, paparazzi. It was like, I'm going to murder my hair today, you know. But yes, it's going to be hopefully a cross-section of the whole school. I know she's got a lot of buzz of kids that want to be part of the Beacon staff, and they have their own little, you know, stand-up pads, and they're, they're jotting down with their little pencils.
Oh, they're like Owen, Mr. Owen.
That's exactly, yeah.
Journalist.
Yeah, so they'll come out every two weeks, so we will happily send an electronic copy to all of you.
Oh, that would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, your Wampanoag event, do you have Melissa Ferretti, she's the Board of Select Chair, she's really involved in that, in the town.
So, Lisa Dix has organized it for years. I don't know exactly who she organizes it through.
Okay. I know she would love this.
Yeah, it's wonderful. I mean, it was obviously my first time last year, but the students are able to actually use some of the tools that.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And what's that date?
That is November 13th at 8:45, so right at the start of the day.
Do you mind if I?
Please.
Mention it to her?
Absolutely, come on down.
8:45?
8:45 to about 9:30.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
This is always like the fun part of the night for me. So, I do just want to highlight in October, we had two really successful fundraising events, so a big thank you to PTA staff, families who supported, was, we took, raised a little over $2,000. And our book fair raised $1,900, which we earned $700 scholastic dollars for teachers, so super excited about that. We also are going to launch a newspaper for a paper. So, that will be part of a WIN group, and again, grounded in writing, we've talked a lot and heard a lot about writing skills, and so Sarah Wiggle will be doing a newspaper as part of our WIN groups. That's one of the opportunities for students, so excited about that. We, on November 10th, are doing a salute to veterans is earlier, it's 7:50 to 8:20 during the noon, you are all welcome to come, so I think everyone's going to go to your school for breakfast after it. But it's really, I'm excited about it. Mr. Bird, our chorus teacher, is working with eighth graders, our eighth graders will sing the National Anthem. We'll have a few guest speakers. We have a teacher who's a veteran, one of our substitutes and a former teacher. We have invited parents and grandparents who are veterans to come and be honored. Students have created a visual display, so if you're in the middle school, you will see that students completed a star for anyone in their family who are veterans, and one of our students probably kind of early in the year told me he knew how to play taps on the trumpet. So, he will, he has been practicing, he is super proud of himself, so he and a friend will be closing out our ceremony by playing taps. So, that is November 10th at 7:50, you are all welcome to come. On November 13th, thank you again to the PTA for sponsoring an author visit. Our One Book One School this year is The Finest Hours, which is Mr. Ed Harwitz and set up the case. So, super interesting, we are inviting families, some high school classes are going to come, so that's here in the BHS auditorium Thursday, November 13th. We have a peer leadership group at the middle school, so they are sponsoring a can drive over the next two weeks. The homeroom that brings in the most food wins a pizza party, they wanted to do it from Buzzard's Bay Pizza, so that's exciting. So, healthy competition there. The BMS PE night will be November 18th, hot off the presses. I just got an email tonight from Andy May there, it looks like it will be a little 3V3 basketball. So, that should be fun, and the Turkey Trot is still happening, and that's November 25th. It will look a little bit different this year than in years past, but it will start at 1:00. And then, lastly, it's kind of a preview of December, we will be opening the Time Capsule on December 19th. There is, I don't know, Christine, if you want to talk, I don't know all that much about the Time Capsule, but Tina is planning it, and it's going to be a really cool thing.
So, the building is 25 years old, this year was opened in 2000, and that's about what I know, there's a Time Capsule. I can't wait to see what's inside.
What phrase did it?
I don't know.
Because I, I was there, the first, first fifth grade for.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know.
You're all invited.
I wonder, I can ask you.
We'll make sure that.
But I do think that Tina reached out to the first principal.
Yes, and he is coming.
Yes.
Very excited.
He loves to come to the, he comes to our retirement party every year as well, but yeah, so Butch Fries, who was a headmaster at the time, but, yeah, he'll be there, so.
He'll be there. We'll make sure that y'all get invited, put a little opening, and we, we moved the budget facility sub-meeting just so that people could attend, so it's going to be great.
Excited.
Anything else?
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
All right. Do you happen, I don't expect you have the high school.
I do not have high school events.
So, we're looking at Zoe.
Oh, yes. They have salute to veterans.
Salute to veterans on Monday.
Monday.
I believe it's the luncheon, and then a gathering that afternoon, I was at the last year. And then, we have, I don't know what else we have that week, and we have a lot. And then, the week after that, we do Thanksgiving, I think it's Easter Thanksgiving.
I have no idea.
The Bonfire.
Bonfire plays on Saturday in the Elite Eight, football plays in the Sweet Sixteen at home on Friday. And then, we have girls are going to play flag football powder puff at the end of the month before Thanksgiving, so that will be really interesting. And then, the.
Lord of the Flies.
Football game on Thanksgiving is at Wernham's, and that's all I know about this one.
We're going to have a bonfire Tuesday evening, too. Is that the 25th?
Yeah.
25th, yes, yeah.
Because we do, we'll do the bonfire and powder puff.
And then, the Thursday Thanksgiving game, and it's my birthday as well.
Powder puff against the juniors versus seniors.
Girls juniors versus girls seniors, and apparently the football boys will be coaching us.
With their tutus on.
That's great. And then, we do have the, the fall drama coming up, so it's Lord of the Flies, and you can see it's on the 12th, 13th, 14th, and I believe 16th, so there's a matinee on the 16th. Yeah, this is all on the district website, and also all available in your app of parents' group, and we'll add some of the ones that are just getting populated now, but yeah, lots of great things happening. Winter meet, the, Winter Meet the Coach Night is also on the 18th, at 6:00. So, again, all of the students who are interested in any of the winter athletics, please come by, that'll be really great. And then, if there's anything else there, if you look into December, you can already see our holiday concerts starting to populate in there, the Havreys and Sanders Workshop, can you believe it? Here we go.
I know.
But yeah, thank you to our principals, please have a great rest of your night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for you principals, please. Would you guys mind if we wanted to show up for like your concerts and like school committee? Do you want us to call you first, or just show up?
They're all there, just so you know when you can come.
Perfect, okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Yeah, events during the school day, as school committee members, you can just attend, sign in the office. For, you know, parents, if it's not something that they're invited to, then they would have to clear that through the principal.
Oh, sure.
But you, you are all invited to anything on that calendar.
Yeah, I love that.
And almost always, there are parents invited to everything, too.
Of course, yeah.
So, okay, so let's move back up, we're going to try to go quickly. In your folder is the personnel report, I'm not going to go through it, except to say it's been an extremely busy hiring season. It's been a little bit of a weird hiring season, because as soon as we hire people, they get poached to other places, and then we have to hire people again. So, you'll see some people are on the hiring and then also on the resignations. Unfortunately, it's just where we are right now in the job market, yeah, so it's just a hard thing. But we certainly have been really busy at Central Office hiring people and all of the principals kind of with the interviews. So, we still have some openings and ESPs, there's a teacher here and there, but we are actively filling those, we have recommendations, we're, we're doing our best. So, take a look at that, I'm keeping it, I'm not putting it on the screen, because some of it is, you know, personal information about retirements and other stuff, but, you know, as the school committee, you can see all that. In teaching and learning, we have a grants update, so we're going to go through that very quickly, but this is good news of all the things, oh, sorry, it keeps thinking that of you, Chris Oliver.
Just change the drop down there.
Yeah, that's what I'll do.
Just add Chris to it.
Nah, that's fine. See, it'll, it'll open, because I'm already signed in. All right.
So, the IDEA, which I take no credit for, that is all Kristen, and the ESSER Grants, which is the Title I, Title II, and Title IV, those have all been fully submitted and approved, and so those are our entitlement grants. We have a significant amount of competitive grant funding that has been awarded, some of it coming in today, actually. So, I can just run them super quickly, Mass Life Sciences Grant, that was for BMS, supporting science supplies, this is the second year that we've received that grant, and so things like microscopes and things like that. Project Lead the Way, this is a multi-year grant, we've already spent about $10,000 of it, and then it goes through 2028. Skills Capital was part of the big announcement at MMA, so that continues to support the development and implementation of the innovation pathways and all of our school-to-career work. Project Lead the Way, again, supporting our technology supplies and training for educators. The Genocide Grant, again, a lot of PD in there for our social studies teachers. The Work-Based Learning Grant, again, going to support all of the same innovation pathways, all of, all of our work. We have a number of ICP implementation grant, planning grant. We have an early college planning grant that was just submitted and approved, so that is really supporting what's already going on, the students who are there and piloting, and then the teams that are both, it's a team across BHS and MMA that is being supported in their work. And then, finally, MYCAP. So, MYCAP, if you're not aware, is basically, that's Desi's like college and curriculum, college and career planning. And so, there's a $7,000 grant to support work at the high school, but then with collaboration with the middle school counselors, so for a grant total of $264,000.
We have a grant writer in the district, or?
So, most of these grants, I'm not going to take any credit for them, are written by the team at the high school, so Jessie Anne Marie Strode is a huge part of that, Lisa Dr. Maguire.
Wow.
They've, they've been doing that work.
Great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Usually coming out of our, our admin team, so curriculum and, yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah, that is.
And we consistently get these year after year, as you can tell, you see all the same things, yeah. Because once you have a really good plan and you're just acting on it, then we're able to tap into these resources, but it certainly helps, and it, it helps us stay really innovative and kind of moving, moving the needle forward. Any questions? We're trying to go fast, because there's still more, more to do. Any questions about grants?
We do.
All right, then, here we go. Mr. Geis, budget and facilities update.
Okay, let's see, budget and facilities update, that's me, huh? I should have had this ready for you during the presentation on the move one up, but I'll make it now. This is my transportation report for grades five through eight, do a little calculations, some downtime, based off some of the concerns raised about the age spans, and just so you have a sort of a better understanding of what that's going to look like. So, current transportation for grades five through 12 this year, we have currently 640 students on the buses in grades five through 12 this year, so similar for next year. There's 453 fifth through eighth graders, 193 in grades nine through 12, breaking that down by the older grades. Grade nine, there's 44 students currently riding the bus, that's an average of two and a half kids per bus. Grade 10, there's 77, which is an average of 4.2 kids per bus. Grade 11, there's 45, an average of 2.5, and grade 12, there's 27, an average of 1.5. So, when you're looking at, you know, the totality of that, there's so few of those kids, the other kids are going to be plugged in on the back of the bus.
The five or ten other cars. Yes, yes. Well, and that's who's registered, correct, not just who's actually sitting in the seats every day.
Right, and that's what you said, there's probably kids that are there after.
Yeah, because many kids were registered and they never took, yeah.
The, all of our routes this year, I don't see it changing all that much for next year. They might get a little bit longer adding a fifth grader, but they'll be between 25 and 30 minutes, which is, given no traffic issues.
Yes. It's not bad.
And that's from the time that they, the first child gets on the bus until they arrive at, on campus, so it's a short ride. Very few of the older kids are on the bus, just on average, only a couple.
Yeah, that's a lot of good information. Yeah, that's a lot of good information. Yeah.
That's great.
It's a no-brainer.
Do we have another bus for like, at our old schools, it was called the late bus. So like a school at 4:30?
Yeah.
My, my kids prided themselves that I never made them take the late bus. Because that was like an hour ride.
The late buses are longer, but the, they are offered for our after-school activities and high schoolers and middle schoolers take advantage of those very regularly.
Absolutely, absolutely. It is a good thing.
On certain days, we only run them on certain days of the week and that's when we put all the activities.
Yeah, that's great information. Thank you.
Should have had that somewhere, but I'd asked for the information earlier than I spaced out, sorry.
That's all right.
Um, in shutdown-related news, uh, the state let us know that funding has been provided for, uh, child nutrition programs, lunch and breakfast, breakfast and lunch, probably the correct order, uh, through at least December. So hopefully we get some movement up there in Washington DC before that. Uh, the Jackson Field Bleachers, um, project, they're going to be demolished starting in December. We had our first kickoff meeting and, um, then they're going to take a break, let the ground freeze up. And then once it thaws, they're going to be pouring, uh, the footings for the new bleachers. That will be in May or early June. When we initiated this project, um, I'm sorry, the completion will be in early May. Uh, late May to early June, sorry. Passed my bedtime. Um, I just want to make sure everyone's aware, we initiated this project. We made it absolutely clear that, uh, June 6th happens to be D-Day this year, uh, graduation, um, that the field has to be accessible. The grandstand area won't nor the snack shack because that's in the, we're doing, uh, doing some work in front of the snack shack as well, but there's another gate. So we'll start graduation on, on Jackson Field. Just a brief update on the, uh, the town meeting that we just had. The wastewater treatment plant repairs were funded by the town. Thank you to the voters, uh, as well as the money for the middle school roof design. Again, thank you for the voters who supported that. Even more partly with, along the same lines, the MSBA did invite us into the, the next phase of their process, which is the feasibility design portion. Um, so that was great news. And during the Budget and Facility sub-portion of tonight's marathon meeting, you're going to be voting on the capital press for FY '20. Those funds, uh, if approved by the town, will be available July 1st of 2026, which is the beginning of FY '27.
Do you want to bottom it now?
This, this, that's you. You're, you're the chair.
Sure. Okay, let's do it.
All right. So do we have a motion?
Do you want me to go through them?
Yes, you'd be going down to 7E.
Sorry, it's tight.
7E has an entire folder. It's, it's a lot.
So Mr. Oliver and myself will, will run through them. The total requests this year are half a million dollars. And Mr. Oliver has the first one that I'm going by the order in the five-year plan, um, how they're presenting. And there's an individual file in your folder for each one of these, but I'm sure Mr. Oliver is going to give you the overview.
Perfect. I will start. I have two, uh, for consideration. The first one is the Bourne High School Auditorium Sound and Projection System. Uh, this project would fund the replacement of our current speakers, amplifiers, cables, and associated sound system. Equipment in the high school auditorium, it would also include replacing the existing projector that is used for presentations. Uh, the project also includes the cost of labor. So really quickly, our sound system is, uh, is quite old. Uh, the speakers and everything, uh, in the backend of it, you know, as you walk in, you have that big soundboard. That's being left alone. That's not being touched. That is okay. It's everything on the, the sound projection end. Uh, we had some issues our first day of school, um, and some other, uh, but actually right before town meeting. So, uh, we want to, I want to take a proactive, uh, approach to this and make sure that moving forward, that when we have these, uh, high priority events, that we have a system in place that happens as expected.
Do we vote on each one individually?
You can vote on the capital plan all of the ones.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, unless there's an issue that anyone has with any of them.
All right. And, uh, my next project, uh, I'm seeking consideration is the Bourne Public Schools' Safety and Security Upgrade for 100, I believe it's $150,000. Uh, this project would allow Bourne Public Schools to make significant security upgrades across the district. Uh, Bourndale Elementary actually has the oldest, uh, security camera system in the district. That is mostly an analog system. Um, so this would involve, uh, replacing the entire camera system to a digital, along with upgrades to building access control. Building access control is simply those, uh, the swipe cards that we all have in order to get in. Um, so that would include that. Uh, the funding would also allow us to make improvements to camera systems at the schools in our main campus, as well as upgrades or upgrading the servers that run the camera systems. Um, just the server, just the, the camera servers alone and the licensing is somewhere in the ballpark of 30 to 40,000 dollars. So this is, um, expensive equipment and expect the life expectancy will be between 10 and 15 years. And that is, uh, my last proposal.
I'll take it from there quickly. The, uh, second request on the list is a CO building envelope study for $30,000 to evaluate the siding, trim, foundation, stairs, and roof at Central Office, um, to develop specification and cost estimates for needed repairs or replacement. The siding is at the end of its useful life and the trim needs to be painted. The roof needs to be evaluated as we recently started having some pest issues in the attic in the second floor.
Heard about that.
The concrete ramp out front, um, needs to be evaluated as well as the metal staircase to the superintendent's office. Uh, needs, needs a bit of a structural evaluation as well. Um, we're also, uh, recently, I think we've addressed it, but we've, my office had flooded the last couple of raindrops. We might have been able to take care of that ourselves, but we still want them to take a look at it. Our next request has to do with paving throughout the campus, um, throughout everywhere, even Central Office. We really need a comprehensive plan for maintenance, repair, and/or replacement of our asphalt parking lots and sidewalks and concrete curbs. Um, the study would provide a detailed analysis of existing conditions and proposed solutions, along with a rough cost estimate. You can see that's sort of spread out over three years. That number at the end is made up. The $30,000 will give us a rough number. 150, 150 will give us the, um, the design and a, and a better number to ask in that third year. Our fourth request is for the Bourne High School Classroom refurbish. This project will refurbish about 12 to 15 classrooms at Bourne High School with, uh, furniture and finishes and fresh paint as needed. Uh, this project is, uh, more than one phase, as you can see on the five-year plan. The fifth, uh, sorry, the, the sixth request, the fifth was the auditorium, the sixth request. Uh, I'm off by one, just six again. Um, oh, that's the reason for VHS. So VHS is, uh, is the oldest building in the district. It's, it is in exceptional shape. Talk about the bones of it. However, to make the environment more vibrant and appealing to students, staff, visitors, and potential students, it is necessary to bring in modern furnishings that support educational practices and educational institutions that are actually in the 21st century. Sort of a jab. How do I do that?
And how are we going to determine where, what classrooms are going to?
Whichever ones you tell me to do.
Okay, no. You've sent out a great, uh, survey to find out exactly.
That's the next one.
Yeah.
We're doing an assessment. We're walking through and, you know, there are some classrooms, you've been in them, they, they look really great. They've already been modernized and we want to get everything to that standard, so.
So this is sort of a multi-year plan to get new furnishings, furniture, furniture, furnishings, paint.
Well, if you need a designer on that team, I know a really good one. Pop some pink and yellow.
Throw pillows. He follows yours and has no bounds.
Our next, our next, uh, request would be to, uh, has to do with, uh, security window coverings. Uh, this project would improve the security of each school by enhancing entrance area storefront windows to slow down any possible, no good do to, uh, doers.
Intruders.
Intruders, uh, with impact resistant film. We have it in some areas. We want to expand on that. Not going to get into the specific details publicly. Uh, in addition, this project will, uh, replace missing and or breaking, broken shades across the district, which are also essential, uh, for security. And of course, this is part of our continuing efforts to enhance security in all our schools. Based off the survey I sent out, we have about, looks like 80 blinds, um, throughout the district that need to be placed. The vast majority of those, they're just not there anymore. Uh, there's, there's a handful that are just broken and they, they can't be pulled down or push, push back up. They're extraordinarily expensive. They're like 600 to 700 dollars each. That's not even installed. Those are all of our requests. I'm happy to answer any questions on any individual one.
So those window coverings, are they, um, you have several vendor prices? Like you'll get three prices?
I will follow all of the required procurement policies.
Yeah, no, I'm not questioning you.
Certified Massachusetts Purchasing Official.
That's a lot of money. Six hundred dollars for a window? That's a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
Wow. Okay.
They're very, not these, but in, especially in some of the other classrooms here, they're very tall windows.
They are.
Yeah.
And they're all, and, and every classroom has a wall of windows.
I know. It's nice and bright. That's the positive.
Whole wall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around how much everything costs in a school system.
I know.
I really, I look at these reports and I'm just, it's long away.
Well, I mean, public, public procurement, it was, you know, you, you have to follow that process. You have to pay prevailing wages. You can't, you can't just hire your friends to, to do stuff.
Of course, yeah.
It's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Relatives. Can't do that either.
So what we would basically, you know, you can take it up in one vote, if you wouldn't mind. And so you're voting on the FY '27 Five-Year Capital Plan. If you notice, what we're really voting on is the 2027, that's why we went down that column. But you can see our, our best estimates of where these will fall over the next one. Because some of these are, you know, the, the money for the plans and then we have money for the actual doing a little later on. So you can see in there, the roof is in there for next year because again, where we are in the process. But everything, I feel pretty strongly that all of these are appropriate. They're going to, you know, give, give a facelift or maintenance to whatever is due. And I, I really want to thank Chris and Jordan for pulling all of it together. Some of it was on, as you said, a short turnaround because it was part of our facilities plan, so.
And it's for security too. I mean, that's, that's huge.
Yeah, the blinds will be both aesthetic and they're for security. That's important.
Right, I never thought of that.
We're always upgrading our security and that's why you'll see it every now and then. But yeah, I feel pretty strongly that all of these are needed. And then hopefully our town will feel that way as well, um, for town meeting.
Okay.
But we have to submit this on Friday to the town administrators. That's why we need the vote tonight.
All righty.
So I move to approve the fiscal year '27 capital requests. Second?
Any discussion on this?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All of those opposed, say no.
No.
Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so I do want to let you know, because this is such a long meeting, we did have an entire list of Teaching and Learning. There's so much that went on, but Christine has said, you know, maybe we can just upload it in the folder. She wrote it out. It was beautiful.
So good.
You're good. I mean, you've heard about a lot of it, as it is anyways.
Yeah, um, Chris and Kristen, um, if, I'm sure you have things to say. Feel free to abbreviate it, but, um.
I can defer till the next meeting.
Kristen?
Just a couple of things. Um, for October, we had a lot of professional development. Um, teachers continued with a new consultant for the IEP writing, specifically the present levels of academic and functional performance. Um, while the ESPs worked on some data tree collection tools. Um, so that was very positive. District's continuing to, um, comply with all the safety care training, um, that was mandated for this year. So all schools are, just about all programs are done with, um, except for PES, which is being scheduled now. Um, and then the final thing is just, um, we submitted the progress report for the Tiered Focus Monitoring Corrective Action Plan and the final submission is due December 8th.
Lot of work.
Thank you. Yeah, that is a lot of work.
That concludes our, um, superintendent's report. And now we can go into subcommittees.
Thank you very much, everybody. Gosh, you guys have been busy. I think that's why we're all tired here. Um, okay, so Curriculum Subcommittee.
No meeting this month.
No meeting this month. Policy Subcommittee, no meeting this month. Budget and Facilities Subcommittee?
We just did most of it.
Yes. That's what we were working on at our last meeting.
All righty. Yes, thank you, thank you. Special Education, CPAC?
Yeah, nothing. I, yeah. I mean, we met, we had a quick meeting this, um, this evening and I got to meet, um, one of the co-presidents and get a feel for CPAC and some upcoming events that they're going to start planning.
Good. Oh, that's awesome. Good, thank you. Um, all righty. All right, Cape Cod Collaborative, that is Ms. Carrie, and she is not here. I don't know if she had a meeting.
I'm not sure, but I do know they're doing strategic planning, actually with TLA, the same folks that we did it with. So I, I know that you'll probably be asked to do a survey and all these things as they're really trying to, um, you know, look at all of their programs and kind of give themselves a lift, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Geis.
Skip the Budget and Facilities, so.
We did.
Budget and Facilities, yes.
I just wanted to let the committee know, if you didn't see it, the end of the year report from FY '25 is in your folder.
Yes, thank you.
It's huge.
Pointed that out.
All the money in, all the money out. I'm not going to go through the whole thing like I was going to. Um, but if you have any questions about that, please feel free to email.
Yeah, that was a thick, thick one. Yeah, thank you. Um, and thank you, Carrie, for stepping up, uh, to be the chair for that one. Um, DEIB Committee?
So I have Jessie's report. Um, so November is Native American Heritage Month, a time to recognize and celebrate the rich histories, diverse cultures, and important contributions of native peoples. Throughout the month, our students will take part in a variety of activities designed to deepen understanding and appreciation of Native American heritage. We look forward to honoring the traditions and perspectives that continue to shape our shared history and community. Um, I know they had their first meeting last month and they have another meeting scheduled. Um, I believe they're meeting, uh, via Zoom this year, but they have another meeting scheduled for, I think, the third Thursday in November.
Great, thank you.
Cruising right along.
Could we get, could I get the, um, what you just read? Could you email that to me, please? Thank you. Okay, terrific, thanks. Um, the District Technology Committee?
Due to some scheduling problems with other staff, we're going to reschedule it, so we didn't have one this.
All righty. Thank you. And then the District Wellness Advisory Committee?
Uh, we are having our first meeting tomorrow at 3:45 via Zoom. If you want a link to see what we're all about, just send me an email. I'll shoot it to you. I'll send it to you. Um, this year, we're mandated to have four meetings. This year, we are again working with, uh, Coach Charlotte from the John Walker Institute, uh, free of charge. And we will be assessing the implementation of the new policy we just created last year and goal-setting throughout those, uh, four meetings.
Nice. Thank you. All righty. Um, discussion items, mask resolutions. We have to vote on that.
Can discuss and, and vote at the same time?
Yes, okay.
I don't think you have to read the entire thing. You just want to say, you know, Resolution One.
Okay, thank you, my computer died.
Have it in their folders.
Yes, okay. So Resolution One, removing BMI testing from schools. Um, oh, wait, this, uh, thank you.
So essentially, again, especially for our new people, um, you're voting on the way you want your delegate to vote at the conference next week. So you would say, are we in support of Resolution One? Like that could be a motion or not. Um, and then you take a vote and then that's the way your delegate votes, uh, when they go.
Okay, did everyone have time to read this? You did? Good, okay. Does Zoe vote on this?
I believe she can.
Okay, did you?
I haven't read this one.
Okay, okay, good. And then this guy here, regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students?
Do you want to do each one individually? I think you have to do them individually.
Yes, let's do that. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, so, um, is there a motion for the removing?
Remove to Resolution One, removing BMI testing from schools.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All righty. Um, any discussion?
I think it's positive. I think it's a good, good thing to do.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. All right, and then the reauthorization of previously approved resolutions.
So my understanding is that because you're still in a legislative session, they want to keep these active. They expire after two years. So these are from 2023, so they're looking to kind of reauthorize. Again, these don't change laws or do anything, but it's telling the School Committee Association to keep kind of fighting for these things in the legislature.
Okay, okay. So do we have a motion for the reauthorization of previously approved resolution?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you.
And that was a whole grouping of them, so I think you're all done with these.
Good, okay. All right, awesome. Thank you.
Great.
All righty.
In the home stretch.
This is the home stretch. Could you imagine if we started at 6:30?
Picking up pillars.
Jordan would be.
We all like the six o'clock start.
Exactly.
See, I have some payroll. See, warrants and payroll.
All right, vote to approve warrants and payroll.
So moved. Second.
All righty, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any?
Oh, I was an aye, sorry.
Oh, what was that?
Aye. I didn't say aye.
Oh, oh, thank you.
I'm a little slow.
Any abstentions? And did I say discussion for anybody? No. The motion passes. Thank you. All right, vote to approve regular session minutes, and we all received those. Thank you to Ms. Jess for those. So do we want to motion for the?
To approve the amendments for October 1st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you.